Good evening to you all and welcome to the council's regular scheduled meeting, the second meeting in September. And we welcome you here this evening. We begin our meeting as we usually do with the, well, before I do that, I think all of you know a mask policy. All staff and visitors, including people who are fully vaccinated, have the option to wear face covering while inside town facilities and during town council meetings. All persons should practice social distancing when possible in council chambers. So we will begin our meeting with the roll call. Thank you.
Mayor Marshburn?
I'm present.
Mayor Purdon Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Clerk. All right, I'm now going to recognize Councilmember Phil Matthews, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and also in the invocation. Sir. Stand.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you again for another day of the gift of life. Lord, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We ask you that this council, Lord, grant us wisdom as we deliberate on issues that have impact on our town, that we make good decisions, and those that are well thought out. We lift up those that are sick. We lift up all of our military. And, Lord, we pray for our country. And we ask all these blessings in your precious name. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. So following our agenda, the first item is always petitions and comments. I'll read to you what we expect during this segment. It says this portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in the agenda. So let me just emphasize, if you're here and you have plans or desire to speak on something else that's on the agenda, now would not be the time to speak. This is for other things. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The board is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So at this point, Ms. Gibson, did we have anybody sign up to speak during this time?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So even if you haven't signed up, but your intention was to come and speak during this segment, and again, I emphasize, this is not, if you're here to speak for an agenda item, now would be a time, if you want to be recognized and raise your hand, I'll try to recognize you and let you come forward. Anybody? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. Councilmembers, I should mention that on our agenda, the intent was to have the item of, the one item under new and old business, that should have been placed on the consent agenda. That was the intent. And so if the, if the council will agree to that amendment, I would entertain a motion that the agenda otherwise be approved as, as published.
I move to second.
Okay, motion probably made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if you're opposed, no, and there is no opposition. Okay. All right, we will now go to presentations. And so our first presentation this evening, some of the heading of GO Triangle, Greater Triangle Commuter Rail Study Update. And we will recognize Ms. Gabby Blontos Lawler, our senior planners. Good to see you. And we look forward to hearing from you. What was yours?
Good to see you all. Good evening, Town Council. So we have with us this evening, Kathryn Eggleston, the Chief Development Officer from GO Triangle. And she is here to provide an update on the latest findings from the commuter rail feasibility study and just to give an overview of next steps with that project. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to Kathryn.
Thank you, Gabby. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy to be here again this evening to give you another update on this study. As you all know, GO Triangle has been working with our partners. Let me see if I can get the slides to advance. Nope. There we go. Okay. With our partners, the counties, MPOs, NCDOT, North Carolina Railroad Company, to advance this feasibility study of commuter rail in the NCRR-owned corridor. We really appreciate the cooperation of your staff and the staffs of other municipal partners and institutional partners around the triangle as we've been doing this work over the last couple of years. You all have seen slides like this before, I think. This is a slide from the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, looking at current conditions on the region's roadways. You see the green where traffic is free flowing, yellow where it's getting congested, and red where we have already congested conditions. Now, we all know in this part of the triangle, this part of Wake County, is already seeing constrained traffic, have a lot of red lines over here in southeast Wake. And when we look at projections for the next 30 years, even if the counties and the state implement the projects that are planned in that transportation plan, congestion will increase on our roadways. We see almost all of the major roadways in the region turning red, congested over capacity. And so that is why local governments in the region are looking at an alternative to be able to travel on commuter rail rather than, or to supplement as an additional option to traveling on congested roadways. This is a slide that shows the projected job growth over the next 30 years, that same period that the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is looking at. These are updated projections from the, the work that the MPOs have done recently, adopted earlier this year. What we see on this map, the, each red dot represents 50 new jobs coming to the region over that time period. You see that green snake or green cloud figure that is the study area for the commuter rail. So you see there that a lot of those jobs that are coming to the region overlap very clearly with that commuter rail area along where those stations are proposed to be. So now we're going to get into some of the updated results from the study. This is a graphic that shows the ridership along the corridor from West Durham on the west end through downtown Durham, RTP, Morrisville, Cary, through Raleigh, and then out here to Garner and Auburn. Each bar represents the magnitude of the boardings at these stations is what's projected in our ridership model. So what we see here is that this commuter rail would have ridership originating throughout the line. It's not like a conventional commuter rail in some larger cities that are really just bringing everyone from suburbs to one central downtown core in this region. As, as we all know in this room, we have a lot of job hubs, a lot of places where people live spread throughout the triangle. So we really have a unique corridor in that respect, that all components of the line, west, middle, and east, are important to supporting that regional vision for connectivity. So what we have updated now are our estimates and implementation schedule, projections for implementing the project from West Durham all the way through the center of the corridor out here to Garner, Auburn, and potentially into Clayton. Our updated cost estimates to build the project is in the range of 2.8 to 3.2 billion dollars in year of expenditure. That just means accounting for the inflation that will occur between now and when the project is implemented. That number is about 50% higher than what was assumed in earlier studies. So that's a big number compared to what's included in the adopted transit plans in, in Durham and Wake Counties. We have an updated estimate of $42 million a year to operate and maintain the system, also a little bit higher. We also have updated ridership projections of 12,000 to 18,000 daily boardings by 2040. That's also higher than what previous studies looked at because it's updated on those, those higher population and employment projections going forward. We have updated the implementation schedule estimates as well, looking at being able to implement the project by 2030 to 2035. That's assuming that a decision would be made this year to move forward and that all the funding could be identified. So as I noted earlier, with these cost estimates that we're seeing, we do think it would be challenging to move forward with the full project based on where we are with available local revenues, as well as with that higher cost affecting the project's eligibility for potentially federal funding that, that has been assumed in the plan. So this has caused us to look at, in response to questions that we've received, if, if it would be difficult to move forward with the full project at one time, can you look at the corridor and identify a portion of the corridor that could move forward first while we continue to work on building out the full regional vision? So the feasibility study looks at where those challenges are in the corridor, what the opportunities would be to move the project forward in each of the segments of the line, if you will, and has identified that those challenges are not distributed equally across the corridor. And I'll go through three slides to show you some of those challenges that we've identified and the opportunities to overcome those. So starting on the west end of the line, there's a lot of words here. We don't have to read all these right now. But basically, in, in the west end of the line, because of some unique geography of the rail corridor, there's a lot of, a lot of rail infrastructure that would need to be added in Durham. We know, you know, the, the corridor today is one track. We know we would have to add a second track. Through Durham, our work with Norfolk Southern, the host railroads has identified even additional infrastructure that would be required beyond that second track that was envisioned or has always been understood to be needed. So some additional costs being driven there, additional complexity. There's also challenges related to the existing Amtrak station that's in downtown Durham. We do believe there's feasible solutions to add the infrastructure there, but we would need to obtain some consensus locally around what the preferred design would be. There's a couple of crossings that would need to be closed as a result of the project. Similarly, there, we would need some local consensus around the design. And to be able to move forward, we'd also need to identify the specific location for the RTP station. There's a couple of things that are being looked at there. So this is the most expensive portion of the corridor with the highest number of things that would need to be overcome to move it forward. Looking at the middle of the line from RTP to Raleigh, this is mostly coordination challenges that we have here. Downtown Cary, there's an Amtrak station. That Amtrak station is planned to be moved from east of one of the major roadways in downtown Cary to west of major, one of the major roadways. And the timing of that project, that movement, is not clear right now. That would need to be worked out between the railroad parties, the town, GO Triangle, figuring out who's doing what when in order to be able to move that project and the commuter rail project forward. There are also a number of grade separation projects that are planned between Durham, excuse me, between Cary and Raleigh that have been committed in NCDOT's plans for what they will build with state funding. However, due to state funding challenges, those have been pushed out in time. The timing of those is now more uncertain than it was when we started this work. So we would want those projects to be able to be completed with state funding prior to implementing commuter rail. If not, there's some question about whether some of those costs would accrue to the commuter rail project to be able to move forward. So again, a coordination issue that would need to be worked out to be able to move forward with service in this corridor. And then lastly, this is the area of the corridor that has the most going on from a railroad perspective. CSX operates in addition to Norfolk Southern between Cary and Raleigh, so that's an additional railroad partner. Also, as you know, the, the state runs trains between Raleigh and Charlotte on a daily basis. And so those trains are operating in this portion of the corridor, but not further east where we'll, we'll go on the next slide. So as we look further east in the corridor from Raleigh down to southeast Wake where we are today, and then east into Johnston County, the feasibility study did not identify challenges from an engineering constructability standpoint. There's track that would need to be added in this area, but it's not as congested of an area as downtown Durham, downtown Cary, downtown Raleigh. It would be more straightforward from an engineering standpoint to be able to move forward with that work. The primary challenge identified out here is, of course, related to Johnston County, whereas Durham and Wake County have dedicated revenues for transit projects that are already identified to support the project. For Johnston County, they don't have that. They've committed funding to this study but don't have a revenue source for implementation. So a decision on how and whether to include Johnston County would also have this financing or funding component that would need to be identified. So another thing that we're looking at in this phase of study, considering the funding challenges for the project and the higher costs, are what additional revenue sources could be identified? Since we started this phase of study, the federal government has enacted the bipartisan infrastructure law, which provides unprecedented levels of funding for rail infrastructure. There's a lot of pots of money. Some of those are depicted on the screen here with a lot of billions of dollars that are available for this type of project. We don't think that you could pay for the whole project out of these revenue sources, but there are some components of the project, double tracking or safety improvements, that could potentially be positioned to be competitive for some of these programs if they also provide benefits for freight or intercity travel in the corridor. So our team is looking at what the potential opportunities might be to match up elements of the project with these programs to be able to bring some additional funding to the table. So in terms of next steps, our goal is over the next several months to obtain stakeholder input from presentations like this. We're going to be meeting again with the GO Triangle Board next week to get some input and share what we've heard back from meetings like this one. We intend to refine the financial plan, that grant strategy that I was just talking about, to ultimately support a decision among the relevant county parties, the MPOs, and GO Triangle's board, on whether and how to move forward with implementation of the project. So that's the end of the slides that I have today. I may be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Eggleston. Just, I guess, a personal point to our citizens here in Garner. I've had the privilege of participating in a, a number of meetings over several months regarding this topic. And it's my understanding that throughout the process, Garner has always been in the mix as it relates to commuter rail as a, as the destination stop. At one time, maybe it was going to sort of be the ending or starting place, but it has, there's discussion about it moving on over into the Johnson County area. So can you confirm for me that my belief that our town is still very much a part of the commuter rail planning, that that is still the case?
Yes, absolutely, that is still the case. And we are hearing a lot of commitment from county commissioners, from MPO members about commitment to the overall regional vision, that even in the event that a phased implementation needs to be moved forward with, where a piece of the project is moved forward first, we don't know which piece that would be right now, that at the same time, work would need to continue on building out the full regional vision that we saw on those maps today.
Let me go around and ask the council if they have questions for you. I'll start with Mr. Matthews, to my left.
Presentation, nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, the, the new projected costs, I saw the article today in the, in the, and you have the updated numbers here. So their forecast, those numbers, 2.8 being the 3.2, are forecast out between the timeframe of 2033 and 2035.
That's right. So that's for costs that would occur between now and then, for design, real estate acquisition, ultimately, construction.
And in Wake County, it was approved a few years back. It's a quarter of a cent of sales tax. Is that what it is, or is it a half?
It's a half cent in Wake County.
Half cent in Wake County. Okay. And, okay. Got a lot of questions I could ask, but I'll let others go.
Okay, thanks, sir. Ms. Behringer, anything? Okay. You're Dillinger?
Yeah, I have a couple, then I'll pass it and we'll go back around. So is partial quarter completion an option? So what is the sort of minimally viable network so that we're not sort of like get deep into this and then it, multiple segments aren't going to happen, so the whole project goes away? So what's the minimum viable network that would get green lighted?
Yeah, we've looked at a few different options. We're starting to evaluate those. We'll be talking with the GO Triangle Board next week about some options. These maps that I put on the screen are really, I think, a good depiction of that potentially. So you could look at an option to start with an initial phase in southeast Wake County from the Auburn station to downtown Raleigh. We see, if you were to implement just this portion of the corridor, about a third of the ridership, about 4,000 trips per day in 2040 compared to about 12,000 on the whole line. So about a third of the ridership. And to implement just the section first would be about 20% of the cost. So again, this is a pretty straightforward area to be able to implement. Looking at the center portion of the alignment, this would also carry, if you just implemented from Raleigh to RTP or Raleigh to Ellis Road, which is the next station up in Durham, that would carry about 4,000 riders a day as well. So that may make sense as a standalone project, or something that we've been asked to look at as a, as a first phase to then be extended beyond that. That would come with a little higher cost, what we're, we're looking at, than that, that piece down to southeast Wake County. And then we have also been asked by Durham to look at what would it take to implement West Durham to RTP as a first phase? As I mentioned earlier, this is where a lot of the cost or a lot of the cost increase is. And we have a lot of challenges here. So it may or may not make sense to move forward with this as a first phase, just from an implementation standpoint. But from a ridership standpoint, this would carry about 3,000 trips a day. So again, might make sense to operate as a standalone for a few years while you work on those extensions. So any of these three pieces or regions of the alignment are being looked at as potential candidates.
Other question is, what's expected in this, this corridor for the maximal success? Like what in terms of density, what in terms of infrastructure, what in terms of, I know that housing affordability is a component and a necessary one for the federal monies. And so what are those expectations? And who's going to define that with us or for us so that we're developing in a way that makes it most successful for Garner? And we can plan this corridor in a way that's going to be sustainable and dense enough to meet the needs?
Throughout this study, we have been working very closely with Throughout this study, we have been working very closely with your planning staff to keep an eye on that question, looking at what are the plans for development in the corridor and how that relates to those federal criteria that you mentioned. The affordable housing piece is important. The planned jobs and employment in the corridor are also very important. And the last piece is the connectivity to the station areas, that's the other piece. Identifying pieces of land that could be used for park and ride, identifying opportunities to provide sidewalk connections, roadway connections, a grid, street network around those station areas. That's a place where your team has been a leader in looking at not only the park and ride opportunities at the Auburn Station, which may be the end of the line, but also looking at a station in downtown Garner with a lot more connectivity to destinations there. So we have had a good partnership to date with your staff and look forward to continuing to work together with them to evaluate those opportunities and ensure the project can be successful.
Follow up, just because it's related. So I mean, that this sort of being reprioritized to this side, it kind of accelerates the need for the planning. And I guess sort of my concern when I hear park and ride is you're, we're trying to turn Garner into a parking lot so somebody can come here and ride off and go back versus this vision of this the destination and create the density, so you don't need to do that. I mean, so I think we may need to do some more work because I think that you want the people living by to benefit without having to drive to the station. And so you have to develop in a way, so knowing where the station is. I just think we need to accelerate some of our thoughts on that locally, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Vance?
Brief, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back around one more time. Anything else, Phil?
You said in the projected jobs, new jobs in that corridor were approximately 350,000 new jobs by 2040. How many jobs currently exist in that corridor?
That's by 2050, I think, let me see.
2050, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how many jobs currently exist in that corridor?
Yeah, so let's see. You know, that is a question that I do not have off the top of my head. I'll be happy to follow up with Gabby to get you that information.
Because I'm making an assumption, of course, you know what happens when you assume that that's probably dubbed, the 350 is probably in addition to probably something, a similar number, maybe not that high, but we're going to have more than double what's in there currently.
It is, it is a big number. I think if we talk about population, we're looking at a population increase over that time period from about 2 million regionwide to about 3 million. So you can think the jobs may be similar, about a 50% increase. But we'll get those exact numbers and we do have a very detailed technical report that will be available to the public to look at with this jobs and employment information.
Thank you.
Mr. Vance, anything? Okay. One more. Everybody satisfied? Thank you so much for coming out to our good town and making this presentation. And for me personally, or for the town, or the mayor's office, I guess I would say, you know, commuter rail, it's certainly something that a lot of people have questions about. It's very costly, but I'm pleased that our town is still considered as certainly an integral part of the mix of this. And I hope to live long enough to maybe ride a commuter train from here to Raleigh or Durham or somewhere. Okay, but we better build it quickly, I guess. Thank you very much. That's it, everybody, okay? Gabby, where are you? Yes, okay. Anything else?
That was it. And I'll be sure to follow up, Councilmember Singleton, on that, on that information that you asked for.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the next presentation. And this is some exciting information regarding Wake Med updates. And I'll recognize the town manager who will be introducing the presenters.
Mayor Marshburn, Town Council, want to introduce some guests that are with us tonight. Local healthcare provider, Wake Med. We have Tom Goff, he's the Chief Operating Officer. Tom Cavender, Vice President of Construction and Design. And Andy Curtis, who's the Government Affairs Representative. And they're going to share some of their plans for the future of Wake Med and some expansion ideas and thoughts that they have for the Garner and Wake County community. So thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Marshburn, for having us here today. And thank you to those of you on the council. I am thrilled to be here on behalf of Wake Med Health and Hospital System tonight to share with you the details of our proposed hospital in the town of Garner. It's not every day that we propose building a brand-new hospital, and so this is a really big deal for us. And my plan tonight is to share with you some of the details of why we're building the hospital, although I think that'll be probably self-evident to all of you here already on the council, and to share a little bit about the site planning and a little bit about the services that we plan to offer in that facility. So happy to answer questions at the end. And again, Tom Cavender, who's our Vice President for Construction Design and Facilities, can answer any questions you have about the particular site. And Andy, I think many of you know, is the person who sends out regular updates to all of you about neat things that are going on at Wake Med Health and Hospital System. So I also want to say, just in my prefatory remarks before I forget, that we are very grateful as an organization for the letter of support that you wrote on behalf of the hospital. I think, as you're all acutely aware, the certificate of need process is a very competitive process. There was a great number of hospital systems and private practices throughout Wake County that are applying for the certificate of need, both for the acute care beds and for the operating rooms that the state has determined as necessary for growth within Wake County. There's the so-called State Medical Facilities Plan. So the state, every year, develops a list of how many of certain services they think the county needs based on a set of formulas. And the determination this go-around was 45 additional acute hospital beds and two ORs. But there are many organizations competing for those 45 additional acute hospital beds and for the additional ORs. So very grateful for your letter of support. It will carry a lot of weight in our application. So this is our pyramid at Wake Med. Those of you that have some familiarity with Wake Med know that this is throughout all of our hallways in the hospitals and meeting rooms. It's basically our strategic plan. We are a not-for-profit hospital system, so everything that we do is geared towards patients and families that we serve, a great number of which are from Garner. Our mission is to improve the health and well-being of the community by providing outstanding and compassionate care. And the emphasis there is care for all. The end of that sentence, we're very proud of the fact that we take care of everybody who comes into all 90-plus of our facilities throughout Wake County, regardless of their ability to pay. Our vision, vision quite simply is to provide that outstanding and compassionate care in partnership with other organizations, all the health and social service agencies. A very small part of the total care that people provide is inside the four walls of hospitals. And so we do a lot of partnering with local municipalities and with all the different services that are located here. And then our aspirational goal is really to be a value leader. We pride ourselves on being a really good value in the community, to be top 10 in the U.S. in quality. There's a great number of our services. I think we had nine services this past year in U.S. News and World Report that were ranked among the top in the U.S. We had three that were ranked among the top in the U.S. in Newsweek. And we've been able to, I think, accomplish a great deal of things in terms of outcomes. And that's really what the focus of our effort every day is with our clinical practitioners. Culture of safety is important. You want the assurances, you come into any one of our facilities, that it's a safe environment and that we'll take good care of you. Extraordinary team is a critical aspirational goal. Everything that we do is with the support and the good fortune of our staff, who've been just incredible throughout the pandemic. I can't say enough things about the roughly 11,000 staff that work at Wake Med. These have been very trying times in the hospital and healthcare environment in the past couple of years. Innovation is a big part of what we're doing. We're constantly trying to transform and think of better and smarter and more efficient ways to deliver healthcare. We talked about partnership. Financial health is critical, even though we're not-for-profit. We try to make just enough every year to reinvest in our facilities and our people and in projects like the one that I'm going to describe to you here. And then highest ethics and standards, we're a highly regulated industry and there's lots of ethical and moral issues that come up in the healthcare environment every day. So we spend a great amount of our time focusing on how to make smart decisions in that respect. The why build a hospital in Garner is quite simply just because our health plex, the freestanding emergency room that's just down the road a bit, is really busting at the seams. It is an extraordinarily busy facility. As you all know, there's 62 people moving into Wake County every day. And a great number of them, as you all know all too well, are moving to Garner, which is just phenomenal. You've added many new businesses and there's new neighborhoods popping up out and about town here. And we really want to be part of that growth. And more importantly, back to our mission, we want to make certain that we continue to have the access to take care of the growing population here in the town. The ED volumes that I referenced, so Wake Med has a total of seven emergency rooms. We have four that are in hospitals. The Raleigh campus has an adult ED and a children's ED. The Cary campus has an ED. Our North Raleigh Hospital has an ED. And then we have three freestanding EDs that we call health plexes, Garner, Aplex, and Briar Creek. And it is the case that Garner Health Plex is roughly half of the total health plex volume. It's certainly the fastest-growing health plex that we have. We started it back in August of 2013, so it's not quite 10 years old. But we see a really large number of patients in that facility. We see roughly 36,000 ED visits in the Garner Health Plex. And just to give you some perspective, that's almost as many. It's about 4,000 short of what we see at Cary Hospital in the western part of the county. And Cary Hospital has 210 acute care beds attached to it. It's about 3,000 less patients that we see in the Garner Health Plex versus the Duke Raleigh Hospital, and that's 180, 190-bed hospital attached to it. So it's very, I think, rare to see an emergency room, a freestanding emergency room that's of the size and volume that we have here in Garner that doesn't have acute care beds attached to it. And so when we got thinking about the opportunity, and this was really the first time in 10 years that the state determined that there were additional acute care beds, despite the phenomenal growth of Wake County. It's been 10 years since they deemed additional acute care beds to be available in the county. The very first place that we thought of was Garner because we're just busting at the seams. We have roughly 119,000 people that we see throughout the Wake Med Health and Hospital System that come from Garner and immediately contiguous towns. Not all of them through the health plex, but a great number of them. And we have roughly 12,000 patients from Garner and surrounding towns, what we call the Garner Service Area, that wind up getting admitted at our hospitals where we do have acute care beds. About 9,500 of them get admitted at the Raleigh Campus, on New Bern, about 2,000 plus at the Cary Campus, some at the North Campus. But there's a growing number of folks, not just utilizing the freestanding ED here in town, but winding up in that venue, needing acute inpatient care and having to be transferred on a daily basis to one of our facilities. It's roughly 32 to 33 patients a day that need to be transferred. Not all of those patients are going to be appropriate to be cared for in a 45-bed hospital, but a great number of them will be. And really, the other part, other than the phenomenal growth of your town that's driving this project, is the understandable and predictable desire of the public more and more to be treated closer to home, right? As the county gets more congested and travel times and shorter distances, distances that are relatively short take longer to get from point A to point B. Folks for care that can be delivered locally in an acute care setting want to be taken care of locally. I think we found that patients are more than willing to travel for really advanced and tertiary-type services to a farther-distance hospital. But for all the obvious reasons, folks would prefer to be treated closer to home. And really, what we're about as a system is trying to make certain, as the county grows, that we've got the necessary services closer to people's homes so they don't have to travel an undue distance. So that's a big part of what's behind this project. This is the site location or sort of a bird's-eye view. As I said, our proposal is to build a 45-bed hospital. It will have two ORs and three procedure rooms. I've got a slide coming up that shows a little bit more detail about what's inside the hospital. We're requesting from the State Medical Facilities Plan, again, that 45 beds that's available for institutions and/or others in Wake County, nine of the 45 beds. The rest of the 45 beds that are going to be in this facility, we're actually relocating from the Raleigh Campus. They're beds that are not in full use. They're beds that were licensed as dual occupancy, and the trend within the hospital industry is single occupancy. People prefer, for all the obvious reasons, to be in a single room or in the hospital. So we're taking some of the beds from Raleigh campuses that exist on paper and moving them to this project and asking the state for nine. And the facility itself will be about a half a mile from our current health plex. So I think we have a slide coming up that shows you, maybe we don't. Let me back up. This is the, this is the, this is the location. So the health plex, we're basically that area that's circumscribed by red in the center of that slide is the acreage. How many total acres, Tom?
200 total.
About 200 acres that we would utilize for the hospital itself. And the proposal is to basically move the emergency room, the freestanding emergency room, from the current health plex location to this new location and to build a hospital around it. We would continue to own and operate the current health plex. Instead of a freestanding ED and a set of medical buildings and x-ray and lab services, that facility that is the current health plex would exist in its current form minus the ED. So all the physician practices, the primary care practices, the specialty practices, the x-ray, the lab, all the other services that you and residents of Garner have been used to getting at the health plex, they'll still be able to get at the health plex. But now what we'll have in the future is an acute care setting a half a mile down the road that they can go to if they need the emergency room and more importantly, the inpatient beds associated with it. The plan, successful in being awarded the certificate of need, would to break ground in 2024. We would likely, if we're successful with our construction timetable, open this hospital in October of 2026. The facility, which again is on the corner of White Oak and Jones Sausage Roads, is roughly 27 acres. It's 177,000 square feet, roughly a $213 million project. And we anticipate, at least at the opening, that it would be at least 350 people that would work there. So one of its derivative benefits is there will be additional jobs for folks in Garner and surrounding communities. And obviously, that's more folks who will be looking to participate as part of this community and buy homes and be, be, be members of the community. So the hospital itself, as I said, total of 45 beds proposed. 20 of those beds would be medical-surgical beds. Two would be intensive care beds for those that happen to need more acute needs. Wake County EMS is really good at triaging folks in the field and getting a good sense for who they take to a tertiary advanced center and who they bring to a local community hospital. But occasionally, folks wind up in EDs all over the county who are more advanced by the time they get their work up and all their imaging. And so we do intend to build an intensive care unit with critical care doctors. And then four beds that we call step-down beds, those are intermediate. Those are more advanced than a medical-surgical bed, but not as intensive in the treatment of patients as an ICU. There would be 14 clinical evaluation beds, and that's, clinical evaluation is sort of a hospital's term. But basically, these are standard inpatient rooms that are for patients whose anticipated occupancy is less than 48 hours, so less intensive care. And there would be a total of 24 emergency treatment base. And right now, in the Garner Health Plex, just down the road, we have 12 treatment base. So we're literally doubling the size or proposing to double the size of the emergency room just because of the volume that we're pushing through there. There'd be one resuscitation room and four triage rooms. And then on the ancillary services side, we'd have, as I said, two full-fledged operating rooms. We'd have four procedure rooms, one endoscopy room, and then the full suite of cross-sectional imaging, CAT scan, MRI, ultrasound, and radiology that's necessary to diagnose patients when they come in the door. I think we already talked about the repurposing of the existing Garner Health Plex. I'll skip that slide. That's basically my presentation. So we're, like I said, we're just thrilled. This is, the, the, the demand for services in Garner is just growing. Not just is the health plex bursting at the seams, but as you're well aware, we have a variety of physician practices located in and around town, not just at the Garner Health Plex, but in other freestanding locations. And the Garner physician offices, whether they're medical specialists or surgeons or primary care doctors, are some of the busiest in all of Wake County within the Wake Med system. We have very long wait times. So this is just a great opportunity for us to provide more access for your community and the citizens that live here. And I'd be happy, along with the folks that I brought in tow, to answer any questions you have about the project.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. So wait there a minute, I'm sure we have a few questions. Just a quick comment, you know, I've lived in Wake County now for 30-plus years, not originally from here. But I think we, as a people, are fortunate to have many good medical facilities in addition to your, your Wake Med and others. But I think the key word in my mind, or the phrase, is getting treatment closer to home. I've sort of longed for the day when Garner, as a town, would have a hospital in the area here. So when I heard the news here, it really was exciting. And certainly, we, we certainly hope that the certificate And certainly, we, we certainly hope that the Certificate of Need will be approved and we can move ahead. So thank you for your good efforts. And obviously, the statistics speak for themselves, I think. So we don't think that's going to change. But getting treatment closer to home will be a big and important thing. Let me see if council has any questions for you. I'll start with Ms. Behringer. Nothing? Okay. I'll go back to Mr. Singleton.
Yes, with anticipated growth, we heard the real folks talking about the number of folks that'll come. Would this hospital be built in such a way that expansion, which might need, needed to be done in the future to accommodate that?
It will, yeah. Tom can talk about that in a little bit more detail.
The plan would be to be able to almost double the number of beds available in this particular site, as well as double the operating rooms. One of the things we've tried to plan so far is be able to expand to the south and to the west as it pertains to the site. So we have learned our lessons on our other campuses, that we need to buy, have plenty of acreage and be able to facilitate the process of a growing community like Garner. So in 2030 and 2040, we can be able to expand the site.
Thank you.
That was going to be one of my questions. And I know when we initially opened the, the Health Plex over there and helicopters out there, and I said, "It ain't going to be big enough." And the gentleman, he said, "We're going to grow." And it's glad, I'm glad to see this happen. It's going to be very good for the greater Garner area. And with the infrastructure, with the I-40 coming through there and 70, we, it'll pull a great deal from all around. And good location. I'm glad we can go ahead and plan on expanding it because you'll, you'll need it. And welcome, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay, good to Mr. Dellinger.
No questions? It's good to hear. And, you know, the Veterans Clinic and so many other health-related industries coming in and bioscience and all that, it's just another great resource and keeps people healthy. So thank you.
Welcome.
Your advance.
The process for the completion of the Certificate of Need, when do you anticipate that happening for it to be approved?
Yeah, it's a process that involves a number of steps. There's a first series of public hearings that the state Health Services Planning Review Board holds to hear from stakeholders and constituents, much as you do here with town events. And then there's basically a period by which the State Health Services Planning Review Agency evaluates the merits of all the proposals that they received. And they have up to six months to make a determination. And historically, they've taken usually the whole six months to make a determination. So I think that would put us well into early part of next year before we hear a final decision. Once they make a decision, sometimes there's appeals from those organizations that weren't awarded Certificate of Need. So there's sort of an obligatory series of, of sort of legal appeals and regulatory hearings that need to occur around those. So I think what I can say is, I think by the early part of next year, we'll have a determination, you know, probably by April-ish, a decision by the Health Services Planning Review Board. But then it's really up to the, to how many organizations are awarded and which ones decide that they want to appeal the decision if they weren't successful. And that can take, to be honest, anywhere from a year to two years. Sometimes it gets resolved within months. There's a mediation process associated with that. So it's, it's a little, little hard to answer the finality of the back end, but, yeah.
Next question, in reference to the timeline, you just proposed you're pushing it tight for the 2026 opening.
We are, yeah.
We're, we're optimists. But at the same time, that particular schedule is based on no appeals from any of the competitors, providers in the community. So that, depending on what the appeal process is, that schedule will slide accordingly as we go through the process.
I would say, you know, we've tried to design our application in a way that would be, would maximize its chances for success. We're planning, obviously proposing to build a 45-bed hospital, but we didn't ask for all 45 of the beds in the medical studies plan. We're only asking for nine. So I think, you know, from our perspective, it's a good proposition for the, you know, for the county because it leaves other beds available for other systems that may have growth needs. And I do think, I certainly agree with the comment that we're blessed to have so many great healthcare organizations here in the Triangle. And I think that competition is good for, for all of us, both as citizens, and it's good for the organizations themselves. Keeps us all at the top of our game. But we didn't propose to take all the beds. Our thought was we'd be maximizing our chances of success if we tried to reapportion some of the beds that we're not maximally utilizing on our Raleigh campus and only ask for a small number through the State Medical Services Plan. So I hope that that positions us well, but only time will tell.
Okay, council satisfied? Okay. I'm thinking of the old adage, I guess it's called a sports adage, but it has to do with baseball. If you build it, they will come, and they certainly have come out there, it appears. So again, thank you, thank you for the work you do. I, unless anybody has questions, I want to just recognize quickly Ms. Andy Curtis, who we've known here in Garner over the years, and she does a good job of keeping us informed and, and letting us know what's going on with Wake Med. And maybe I left out someone else, but I recognize your face there. So thank you for being here. Thank you all.
Thank you all for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes the segment of our agenda relating to presentations. And so now we will go to the consent agenda. There are, what, six items? And we added the other one. So with the amended item in mind, council, would you approve the consent agenda this time?
So maybe with the five on the agenda and the one that was added, we're total of six.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. If you favor approving consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, there's no opposition, so it is so ordered. Okay, we now will go to public hearings. We have several of those. And the first public hearing is going to be a quasi-judicial hearing. This is a special use permit with site plan H U P S P 2203, Catty Road Public Safety. Our presenter will be Ms. Allison Jones. I believe at this point, I need to swear in any witnesses that expect to give testimony during this hearing. And also, I believe I need to, council needs to hear. So council, do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change? Or have you had any ex parte communication? Do you have any close familial business or other association or relationship with an affected person or have a financial interest in the outcome? And be reminded this is a fact-finding hearing and only competent material and substantive, substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. So council members are only allowed to receive factual information during the hearing, not allowed to discuss the case outside the hearing. I'd also draw your attention to the, to the good information that our town attorney submitted to each of you today. And I'm going to read that here since this is rather unique circumstances relates to ex parte. So in compliance with North Carolina General Statutes 160D-109, council members are required to disclose any ex parte communications relating to the project, which is the subject of the special use permit and quasi-judicial hearing this evening. It is, is my understanding that the consideration of the joint facility with Wake County and Fucue Verina and the site location of Catty Road began as early as 2017. As a result, the town entered into a memorandum of, of understanding with the county in Fucue Verina regarding the design of the public safety facility. In addition, the town council recently approved an inter-local agreement with Wake County regarding the construction of the project. These decisions necessarily involve communication with the applicant of Wake County government. If any individual members have other communications that occurred outside a public meeting, those communications should be disclosed at the beginning of the hearing. So we would thank you for your attention in this manner. Obviously, the, the idea of communications beyond what would normally, would not be expected to have already occurred, and we've even had some votes on this. So council, the, the idea of you having communication beyond the scope of this, if that would be the case, you should identify it or let us know now. Is that the case for anyone? Hearing none? Thank you. Okay, I believe it's time for me to open the public hearing. And I will recognize our planning department. Ms. Behringer.
Good evening. I am Allison Jones. I'm going to present the PowerPoint for Catty Road Public Safety Facility, also known as Fire Station Number Five. The applicant is Wake County Government, Facilities and Design Construction Department. The current owner of the parcel is Tom Garner. And located at 7816 Catty Road, the tract size is a little bit over five acres. The request is a new fire station slash rescue squad on the 5.19 acre lot across the street from, excuse me, at the intersection of Catty Road and Fields Drive. It may be further identified as Wake County PIN 0699175451. As I mentioned, it may pose use as a fire rescue squad station. The current zoning at the time of application was multifamily one, as everyone is almost maybe aware that the town changed its zoning districts back in July. So as of September 5th, the zoning is multifamily A, so MFA. The overlay district used to be the US 7401 district. Now it is the commercial highway overlay district. The setbacks are 35 feet for the front, 25 for the rear, side 15, and the corner lot would be 25 feet. There was a neighborhood meeting held on March 17th of this year at the Wake Technical Community College Southern Campus at 6:00 PM. And here is the overall site. Right here is Stormwater Pond. Right in this areas where the bays are located, some parking right here, dumpsters located right there, and some additional parking up here as well. Here's an illustration version of the building. The materials are going to be medium red wire cut brick, that's the color, the brick, and moka brick as well. And there will be fiber cement boards, excuse me, panels for accent colors as well. There was no open space requirement for this project as it is a non-residential development. Upper apartments. The tree coverage is required to 10%. They are preserved 10% along with some extra plantings. The street impermeable buffers, the street buffer along Catty Road is 15 feet wide, and the perimeter buffer is 35 feet for the western, 15 foot for the southern buffer, and 25 foot for the northern buffer. The site plan meets both the U D O and staff's policy in regard to LED light fixtures. The fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light exhibiting color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking. For parking for ambulance service or rescue squads is based on one space for every 200 square feet of floor area. It's required to have 89 spaces, but they are proposing 40. The parking requirement is based on the entire building, which includes the bays, which we don't really need parking for the bays because the people that are working there, that parking space is already accounted for for their parking, excuse me. So the applicant also provided a parking study for the reduced parking requirements and is subject to council's approval, but staff finds it acceptable as it is proposed. The fire protection and inspection department, along with fire department, has reviewed this and approved this plan. There is not a FEMA floodway on this project parcel. However, new river buffers do exist. There are no plans to develop in those environments with sensitive areas. However, if, if need be, they need to impact those environmentally sensitive areas, the appropriate state and federal agencies will have to authorize that, that impact prior to us releasing the permit. Stormwater management. Catty Road Public Safety Facility is a commercial development site that's located within the watershed protection area, and the site is subject to stormwater quality and quantity requirements for the 1, 10, 25-year storm events. This plan proposes a stormwater wetland to treat impervious surface for development. This device will satisfy all water quality and water quantity requirements at this site for the nitrogen 85 TSS removal and will detain the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. A nitrogen offset payment will be required as a part of this development. This project will connect to the City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer System. Infrastructure and sidewalks of this project. As I mentioned, this project is located at the east of Fayle Road and directly crossing from Fields Drive, excuse me. Catty Road is a town on Garner Modern Collector Street. The improvements to this section of roadway, including widening, sidewalk, curb, and gutter, are being installed by the McCullers Residential Subdivision to the east of the site. The development will have two driveways onto Catty Road, one for vehicle access and parking lot, and one for emergency vehicles. The, the development will also construct modifications to the median at the intersection of Catty Road and Fayle Road to accommodate the train movement for the larger emergency vehicles. Site plan conformity with U D O. Following the technical review of the plan revision, staff finds that this project as now proposed may be consistent with U D O as so long as the following site-specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of billing permit, the payment of engineering fees, if applicable, shall be paid to town of Garner. Prior to the issuance of billing permit, the City of Raleigh fees should be paid. And prior to the issuance of billing permit, the nitrogen offset payment shall be paid to improve mitigation bank. I do believe that the applicant is here. If you guys have any questions for them, but I'm done with my presentation. I'm here for any questions for staff.
Okay, so before we go to them, does anybody have a quick question for Ms. Jones? Anybody down here? Okay, this side. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant at this time, I guess. You would state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, I'm Ken Murphy, Senior Deputy Wake County Attorney with the Wake County Attorney's Office, PO Box 550, Raleigh, North Carolina 27602. Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm pleased to be before you tonight seeking a special use permit for Wake County to construct the new Catty Road Public Safety Station. This is a co-location project which will house personnel and apparatus from Garner Fire Rescue, the Garner Police Department, and Wake County EMS, and which will protect and promote public safety for both the citizens of Garner and Wake County. Now, this project is well-known to this council, and it's also well-known to the Wake County Board of Commissioners. It's been discussed at numerous public meetings over the past year. Earlier this month, council unanimously approved an inter-local agreement with Wake County for the development of this project. And just yesterday, at the Wake County Board of Commissioners meeting, our Board of Commissioners likewise approved the ILA. So our objective tonight is simply to address the eight criteria that this council has to find to approve the county's application for a special use permit, which is necessary at this point to move this project forward. And to that end, I have with me tonight several people who have been instrumental in the planning, design, and operation of the proposed Catty Road Public Safety Station. They're seated behind me to my left, and they are Chief Matt Poole from Garner Fire Rescue, Deputy Chief Mike McIver from the Garner Police Department, Don Garner, Chief Operating Officer, Wake County EMS, Troy Olson, the project's landscape architect from CLH Design, Mike Esposito, the project's architect from ADW Architects, Steve Miller, the project's civil engineer from CLH Design, Nick Kirkland, a North Carolina certified general real estate appraiser from Kirkland Appraisals, and Tommy Mormon. appraiser from Kirkland Appraisals, and Tommy Mormon from Wake County Facilities Design and Construction, the project manager on this project. Now, several of these individuals will speak to council briefly tonight about the proposed project. All of them are under oath and available to answer any questions that council may have about the Caddy Road Public Safety Station project. And at this point, Chief Poole is going to bat leadoff for us, so I'll call him up, and he is going to address the council on special use review criteria one, the proposed use will not endanger public health or safety, and criteria number five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the proximate neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. You spoke to an issue that I meant to ask my town clerk about. I think I saw her swearing in people a little earlier. Ordinarily, I ask her if she needs any time to swear in people. You already taken care of that, is that right? I knew that was the case. Thank you very much. I recognize Chief Matt Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight to speak on item description number one and five. The first item proposed will not endanger public health or safety, so I'm here tonight to answer any questions and to validate that point as well, as well as number five. The proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses proximate neighborhood in terms of building scale, site design, buffering, screening, operating characteristics, hours, traffic generation, lighting, noise, odor, dust, and other external impacts. And so it is my belief that in the design and construction of this project that we have met all of the town responsibilities regarding those two items.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Council, do you have any questions for our fire chief? Anybody? Okay, I believe you're set. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And now, Don Garner, Chief Operating Officer, Wake County EMS, will address council and offer testimony in support of review criteria number one, the proposed use will not endanger public health and safety. Number five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses in the proximate neighborhood, and number eight, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided.
I recognize you, Mr. Garner.
Mayor, as council, again, I echo what Chief Poole said regarding items number one and number five. We do believe we have met all those requirements. Regarding number eight, continued maintenance, the county has a department within its structure called General Services Administration. They are the county's landlord, and they are responsible for the maintenance of the facility, including any renovations and repairs and maintenance to the property itself. Similar in partnership that we have with Garner and other stations, Spaceway Court, if there is a maintenance item, we report it to General Services, and they come out and either replace it or repair it with internal county employees or with a contract that meets specifications for General Services. Any questions?
Council questions, so Mr. Garner. I believe there are none. Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Nick Kirkland will address council and will offer testimony on review criteria number two, the proposed use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Mr. Kirkland is a North Carolina certified general real estate appraiser. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may approach the town attorney, Mr. Kirkland has prepared an impact analysis report for council.
Good, thank you.
I would, at this point, before I forget, like to ask that Mr. Kirkland's impact analysis report be accepted into the record in this matter.
Okay, I think I can agree that that is appropriate at this time.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. My address is 9408 North Field Court, Raleigh, North Carolina 27603. I'm a state certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina and the Commonwealth of Virginia. I've been appraising for seven years. I've been accepted as an expert before boards like this and hearings just like this, well over 100 times, in property value impacts. What we've done at Kirkland Appraisals is we've done an impact study to determine whether or not the proposed development would impact the adjoining property values if developed as proposed. In order to determine whether or not something would impact the adjoining property value, the go-to standard is called a matched pair or a paired sales analysis. It's a methodology supported by the Appraisal Institute, and it basically comes down to comparing a home that's sold next to a similar facility like this that already exists in the nearby area with similar nearby homes that sold in a similar timeframe that did not adjoin such a use. And the question is, do homes that back up to uses just like are proposed here sell for more, less, or about the same for other nearby non-adjoning homes? So that's what a matched pair is called. There's four examples within that impact study that just got passed up showing homes that sold next to similar facilities just like this nearby are selling for similar prices per square foot and for similar sales prices overall to homes that do not adjoin such facilities. So based on this, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use will not impact the adjoining property values, and I'm happy to explain the impact study or go into further detail or anything like that, if I can answer anything.
Okay, thanks, sir. That may not be necessary, but I see if council has any questions, concerns, Miss Singleton. Will this end? Any? Suppose not. Thank you. Thank you for the information here.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, Troy Olson, the project's landscape architect from CLH Design, will offer testimony in support of review criteria number three, the development will comply with all requirements of the Garner UDO, and number four, the proposed site use is consistent with the town's transportation plan, other plans and policies, and the stated purpose and intent of the UDO.
Welcome, sir.
Troy Olson, CLH Design Licensed Landscape Architect, 400 Regency Forest Drive, Cary, North Carolina. For item number three, the development will comply with all the ordinance of the UDO. And for item four, the proposed intent use for the town transportation plan and other policies stated will comply with the UDO.
I think there are any questions, but I'll ask. Yeah, okay. Mr. Dellinger.
There's a mention of a modification to the median at the intersection of Caddy Road and Fayetteville Road. It says to accommodate the turning movement of the larger emergency vehicles. Does that include a southbound turn movement as well?
What we propose to do is lower the median so they can go southbound and northbound.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Mike Esposito with ADW Architects. The project's architect will offer testimony in support of review criteria number five, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent uses and the proximate neighborhood.
Evening, sir.
Sir, Mike Esposito, 2815 Coliseum Center Road, Charlotte, North Carolina. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Glad to be here tonight to represent this project. We believe that the proposed use as a public safety station is compatible with adjacent uses and proximate neighborhood. The predominant uses in this area are commercial and medium to high density residential. There are also commercial and retail plans currently into planning being reviewed right now nearby the site. Prior to tonight's meeting, we did have a neighborhood meeting at Wake Tech, and most of the attending folks were in favor of the use and the appearance of the building. As staff mentioned, the commercial highway overlay district requires that 50% of the building be brick or stone veneer, and as you can see from the elevations, we exceed that requirement. We've complied with the landscape buffers and with new plant material and existing plant material on the site, as well as the street buffers, as staff mentioned, along with the street trees. The perimeter buffers are all complied with. The parking lot lighting, as mentioned, meets the UDO requirements, the LED requirements. So at this time, we feel we've required, or we've basically met all the goals that planning had required for this project. Any questions?
Okay, council questions for Mr. Esposito? Any here? Okay, thank you, sir. We're moving right along.
And last but not least, Mr. Steve Miller, the project's civil engineer with CLH Design, will offer testimony to council in support of special use review criteria number six, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset. Review criteria number seven, the public safety, transportation, and utility facilities and services will be available to serve the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service for existing development. And review criteria number eight, adequate assurances of continuing maintenance have been provided.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Miller. I'm a professional engineer with CLH Design, address 400 Regency Forest Drive, Suite 120 in Cary. I'm here to testify that the project, any significant adverse impacts resulting from the use will be mitigated or offset, including impacts to the natural environment. I think staff report indicated that we are avoiding any impacts to the news river buffers that are adjacent and infringe on the site. The project also includes a constructed stormwater wetland to address stormwater impacts. So I feel natural impacts of the site are properly taken care of. In regards to public safety, transportation, utility facilities, obviously, public safety, I think we're not only putting a strain on it, but we're obviously making public safety better with this project. But in regards to utilities, the project will connect to public water and sewer facilities. We have approval from the City of Raleigh for those connections. The facility will not put any strain on those services, so there's plenty of sufficient service for our facility and the existing neighbors. Lastly, regarding maintenance, the county addressed how they perform maintenance. The only thing I can add to that is our design includes specific maintenance direction for the constructed wetland on the site, so when the county is maintaining that, they have clear direction on how to do so. So in my professional opinion, this project complies with those three findings of fact. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Miller?
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Murphy?
Mr. Mayor, council members, that concludes the county's presentation in this matter. At this time, Wake County submits that all eight special use review criteria spelled out in Garner UDO Article 4.7.4D have been met, and Wake County respectfully asks this council to make the appropriate findings of fact and approve the county's request for a special use permit for the proposed new Caddy Road Public Safety Station to protect and promote public safety in Garner and Wake County.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who desires to speak on this issue at this time, who's been sworn? Okay, I believe, Mr. Attorney, I can close the public hearing at this point in time, which I will do. Council, any other discussion amongst yourselves before we call for a motion on this matter? Anybody here? I believe a motion is in order on the special use permit.
Mayor, I'm moved. I find that the application SUP SB 22-03 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2.D. Therefore, I'm moved that the town council approve SUP SB 2203, the Caddy Road Public Safety Facility, with the three site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second. Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton, and I heard a second by Ms. Beringer and Mr. Matthews. We'll give Ms. Beringer credit for that, I guess. All right, the motion is properly before you. Having been seconded, all those in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, vote no. And there is none. Thank you all for your time and attention and waiting for this. We look forward to this joint interlocal process that's going to give us some additional needed space we have here. Thank you. Was there any? I failed to ask Ms. Jones if she had anything else. Was that it? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, be safe getting back to your respective homes. Okay, the next item under public hearings is item number two, Tier Two Conditional Rezoning, CM MP 2211 Spring Drive Town Homes. I'll recognize Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, and I think it's fair to me to say upfront that the council certainly would not be taking any final action on this tonight, but the expected motion is to refer this to the planning commission, but we'll hear from Mr. Trezenberg first and others who may be here for this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Yes, tonight here, first of two zoning cases, Spring Drive Town Homes, this is a Tier Two Conditional Request. If you'll recall, there was a request on this property that was denied back on January 18th. The applicant came back and made some adjustments and asked this council for a waiver of the waiting period. That was granted on June 6th, and then they proceeded to submit and have their neighborhood meeting on June 27th, and we're now here at the public hearing. Again, the applicant this time around is Charlie Townsend, a professional engineer with VHB. The owner is still Springfield Development Corp. And the request, again, zoning districts have changed as Ms. Jones noted in the previous case, so the property is now zone neighborhood mixed-use conditional. The same conditions are still applicable, C92. And the request is to multifamily one, that was the original request. This would be adopted potentially as multifamily A with a C267 incorporating their proffered conditions. So this is for the development of a townhome community not to exceed four and a half dwelling units per acre. There are zoning conditions that restrict the range of uses to only townhomes. That's why we can say that with clarity at this point. And architectural and other conditions are also proposed. Here again is the site at the end of Spring Drive on the east. Grove Mont Road here on the west, new connection coming in from Timber Drive about here. And here are the site views. This is from the Spring Drive and Looking West from last winter. This is looking up Spring Road at the site. You see the fence there at the end of the road going into the school property. And then again, the site looking from Grove Mont South will be on the left. Here is the adjacent zoning, again, neighborhood mixed use for the property now, still with the conditional zoning's attached. You see the school property here zoned R2, which extends actually through and bisects the subject property to Spring Road. We have R2 and a little bit of MFA to the west, R4 to the south, and MFA to the east, and R4 beyond. We did the zoning history, just as we did in the last go-around with the addition of the denial of the previous case, CZ SB 2102. Just a synopsis of the site's zoning history at the bottom, back in 19... Back in nineteen seventy-two, it was zoned R fifteen. After nineteen seventy-two, there was a rezoning that year to M F two. In ninety-nine, that's when the office institutional zoning was adopted. And then in twenty-twenty-two here, that office institutional was translated to the neighborhood mixed use. So neighborhood mixed use. This district is generally intended to accommodate low-intensity commercial enterprise, to provide goods and services to residents in the general area, trying to generate convenient access without requiring cross-town trips. The uses permitted are of a nature and scale that are compatible with nearby residences. The district provides areas for uses that include offices, professional services, small-scale retail. And so you see there, the permitted uses from the ninety-nine conditional case included some of these very types of uses. The proposed M F A, C two-sixty-seven conditions, again, town homes only. And as noted previously, density not to exceed four and a half dwelling units per acre. The rest of the conditions are largely familiar. From the previous case, the development shall include about nine thousand square feet of community gathering. Each townhouse, minimum thirteen hundred square feet. Then we get into some of the architectural things again. Compared these to the previous case, these are identical. Here at the end, number fourteen, we have noted here that the applicant is pursuing the eight-foot solid fence to be installed. Staff would just note that that is subject to Board of Adjustment Approval. Staff identified eighty-nine properties within the three-hundred-foot notification radius. We provided that ownership list to the applicant for those first-class bail notices regarding the meeting. Again, that was held on June twenty-seventh at the Garner Senior Center. About fifteen properties total represented. The master plan, the entire area is about eleven point one-three acres. Under the old M F one rules, this would have allowed up to potentially a hundred and six units. This master plan now caps that at fifty, or the four and a half dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot width is eighteen feet. The setbacks are noted there. Here is the master plan. And in here, they have highlighted some things, and we've highlighted some as well. Here, you do see that flagpole of the school property dissecting their properties, so they've illustrated the access gates here that the school system requires as part of that. Still have a stormwater control maintenance measure here, the direct entrance off of Timber Drive. We now have fewer units, particularly along this southern line, with additional spacing between the buildings to allow for some formal landscape and sitting areas between the buildings. We still have dumpster service, the pocket park here in the center next to, or adjacent to, the mini-traffic circle. They have identified also some potential flat-top speed bump locations here and here in the future, subject, of course, to town policy. We have the existing wetlands over here and the dog park tucked in the corner. Updated the traffic numbers that we presented at the last one. At fifty lots, you're now looking at an estimated number of trips per day at three-hundred-and-sixty-five, or round trips at a hundred-and-eighty-three, with estimated A M and P M peak hour trips of twenty-three and twenty-eight. There is no connection to Spring Road, as the adjacent property does belong to the school. Proposal does have permission to cross the school property with the roadway. Mini roundabout will, again, provide traffic control, help to mitigate excessive block length due to the lack of access alternatives, and then again, the speed bump locations potentially for the future. In terms of landscaping buffer requirements, this version of the submittal will now be subject to the eighteen to twenty percent sliding scale, as that amendment was adopted prior to this particular re-submittal. The perimeter buffers there again, with the addition of the fence, being allowed to have that reduction, but no reduction in terms of plant material. Street buffers, the twenty-five-foot undisturbed is still along Timber Drive, only allowed to be crossed by the street and any utilities. Works in open space, required at ten percent. I did get an updated figure from them today. The proposed is actually at about twelve point six percent, or one point four oh acres. Again, this open space will be owned and maintained by the H O A. In terms of environment and floodplain, there are no FEMA-designated floodplanes, but we do have the riparian buffers up here in the extreme northwest and along the east. Develop, staying out of those. Water and sewer infrastructure, again, they'll be proposing that they connect to the existing water and sewer here, both eight-inch lines, and they will be required to extend them through the site and along their frontage on Timber Drive per Raleigh Water Policy. Infrastructure that we would then continue to examine and review at preliminary plat review if this were to be moved forward. Lighting for streets and common areas, the stormwater management devices, the very specific sizing and capabilities of those devices, the waterline and hydrant spacing, and of course, we would again revisit the landscaping and parking requirements to make sure that all of those minimums continue to be met throughout the review process. So just as a reminder, on a Tier Two Conditional Rezoning, the next steps would be to refer this to the planning commission so that they can review and put together their statement on plan consistency. It would then come back to you for a decision at which you would need to adopt a statement of reasonableness. And so our public hearing recommendation is that once you have heard comments from the general public, that C Z M P twenty-two-eleven be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Counsel, you've heard Mr. Trezenberg's presentation. Do you have questions for him?
I think it's time.
Okay, it says there'll be no street connection to Spring Drive. Would you explain that for us? All the time, Spring, I know it's Spring Road.
It's Spring Road.
It says right here, item four, there'll be no connection to Spring Drive stub located at the southeast corner of the site. I'm sitting here reading it on the agenda. All you have to do is tell me it's incorrect.
Yes, incorrect.
Okay, that's what I'm, I kept thinking, we know we're not going to Spring Road.
Yeah, Spring Road.
But it says Spring Drive, and it says the southeast corner. Well, that's Spring Drive, isn't it the southeast corner?
That is the southeast corner.
So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, because it says it here, and I kept thinking, I see this here. The questions, you mentioned that intersection, yes, thank you, potential places to put traffic calming devices? I think they should be included to begin with. We shouldn't sit here and wait for what we're going to do. I think traffic calming should be placed there. I think as people come off Spring Drive, there should be traffic calming devices. And the reason I say that is, once you get on that stretch of Spring Drive, it's straight shot into that place. You know, that's got that funky curve, because back when I was growing up, we didn't have the funky curve, and we drove like idiots in there, because there was no houses there, and they put the funky curve in to slow us all down. So, the turn. It used not to be like that. It used to be we could drive like wild people, and some people did, so. But there were no homes there. Nothing was buckhorn, all that was, you know, the homes there weren't there. So I would just suggest that we look at putting in a traffic calming. As you come in, and a couple of the spots, I think you probably already discussed, I'll stop right there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. Ms. Behringer. Okay, Mr. Behringer.
Yeah, I want to reinforce what Gray said. I was reading the notes from the public, the neighborhood meeting, and there were multiple questions about reducing cut-through traffic and adding speed bumps, and the developers' response to them had something to do with uncertainty related to the process with our ordinances, that there's a process to follow, and I wasn't really clear on why new development would need to go through our traffic calming ordinance, and we wouldn't just require it from the very beginning, particularly because this is, without them, they'll become a cut-through. On record for the last version, not being in favor of that connection on Timber Drive, but if there are definitely not sufficient traffic calming measures in the neighborhood, I wouldn't. So if, like Mr. Singleton said, if we can include those from the very beginning, and they're very pronounced and effective, I think it's going to go a long way to making it safer and making that neighborhood better, because people won't be cutting through. Other question is on the northwest portion of the property. It's really hard to tell from the aerial views and the property lines as to how much of that tree canopy is preserved in that buffer on this property versus what's on the school system's property? And my concern is a old-stage road effect, where all of a sudden, all of the trees are gone. And so if we could get some more clarity on, there's still going to be a tree line in between the backside of that baseball field, and I don't know, again, maybe if there's enough on Wake County's property that it's not necessary, but I know there's already a buffer over that side, but I think making sure there's sufficient maintained canopy there, no break, would be helpful for maintaining continuity of the aesthetic. There aren't any comments at this time.
Behringer, I'll go to Mr. Vance.
I have no questions, just agree also what's been said about the traffic calming devices being a part of the process of the design here. What other questions?
Thank you much. Counsel, questions for Mr. Trezenberg. Mr. Trezenberg, let's see, do you know who is next?
The applicant does have a short presentation.
Welcome, sir. If you'll state your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
Charlie Townsend, I'm a professional engineer with V H B, located at nine forty Main Campus Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina, zip code two-seven-six-oh-six. I'm also joined here by one of my colleagues, Baohong Wong, Ph.D., also a professional engineer. He is the traffic engineer for the project. Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you for your time this evening. We hope to keep this presentation short. Mostly, we want to highlight the differences and address some of the concerns that were just brought up to Mr. Trezenberg. So this was the previous master plan that was done back in January two thousand twenty-two. Since then, we've revised our master plan. We have also had the neighborhood meeting, where we heard concerns much about traffic and other concerns about privacy, among a few others. What we're proposing today, the summary of our changes, as it regards to density, we reduced the total units from fifty-nine to fifty units, so about a fifteen percent reduction, reducing the permitted units per acre from five and a half to four and a half, as Mr. Trezenberg said. Traffic calming, it is our intention to add two flat-top speed bumps that are now allowed in the U D O on either side of our neighborhood traffic circle. We'll also have a ride-in, ride-out at the intersection with Timber Drive. For open space, we've added four, what we're calling parklets, with benches and landscaping, increasing our open space from one point one-three acres to one point four acres, which is just about twelve and a half percent of the total site. In regards to building blocking, we increased the distance between the five-unit buildings along the southern border from thirty feet to fifty feet minimum to provide more separation and hopefully preserve much more of that existing vegetation. We heard about privacy, and so one of the conditions that we're proposing, we do realize that it's pending Board of Adjustment Approval, would be the increased fence height along the adjoining properties from six feet to eight feet in height. And then, lastly, as we know, the parcel was rezoned from O and I to N M X with the adoption of the U D O. The conditions restrict that base density for the N M X. We do realize there are the other restrictions, but that would be reducing it from twenty units per acre allowable with N M X down to four and a half units per acre, which would be proposed. This is, as we just saw, the proposed development. The other things that I would like to bring up, the question on the speed bumps during the neighborhood meeting, some neighbors to the east of our development were asking about the possibility of adding speed bumps to their streets. And so that's why we said that we would follow up, and we weren't necessarily certain on the town's policy. Since then, we did communicate with those neighbors and did send them the appropriate policy for their application, which would go in front of you all. We are proposing, what we're saying, the proposed flat-top speed bump location. We've not gone through the process of grading out this site, but it is our intent to have one on either side of that traffic calming circle. So in the brief analysis that we've done, we want to have one just as you're coming off of Timber Drive, to avoid having people speed up right before they go to the traffic circle, and then one just before the stop sign at the southeast corner, to once again hopefully try and prevent people from accelerating around that turn, going towards that traffic circle. In the top right-hand corner, we did do a rough trip generation analysis. We're going to be under the four hundred average daily trips, which is about twenty-seven percent of allowable if this was truly developed as a multifamily with that twenty dwelling units per acre. Once again, we are, do recognize there are other restrictions on the site that would have to come before council. I am here to answer any questions, as well as my colleague, and then we do have members from the development team in the audience as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this time I'll start with Mr. Vance to my right, if he has questions.
No questions.
Okay, coming around, Mr. Dellinger.
I don't know if you can answer the question I asked him about the tree canopy on the northwest corner on the property line behind the baseball field. And you don't need to answer it tonight, but I just want to kind of make sure that there's sort of a continuity of canopy, and that it doesn't end up a large gap there.
Absolutely. And we don't have, based off this site plan, the true, we don't know exactly where the trees are exactly on the site, but we would be able to do a tree survey if required.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
Getting back to traffic calming, the neighborhood traffic circle, what is proposed to be in the middle there to deter someone from not just going straight over that? Because I have seen some in towns where it might as well not even be there. It's just raised asphalt, and you can just ride right over it. There's no plants, there's nothing in the middle. So I'm just asking, is it going to be a three inches of asphalt raised or concrete, or is it going to be something that somebody just not want to drive over?
It would be per the town's standard details and specifications, but we can look at trying to do something in addition to prevent that kind of acceleration straight through.
Okay, I also think you need more than the two flat tops, I think. I would consider, because who could possibly drive on there? And I don't know how many high school kids realize that if you get out of there, you can only turn right. I don't know if some of them would think that out. I would consider more than two of the flat-top traffic calming devices. I think three to four might be needed. Leave it there. Thank you.
And I would clarify that we have about one traffic calming device every six hundred feet currently.
I agree with Ms. Singleton that sometimes you can't get enough of those calming devices, and I would most certainly support adding more rather than just those two there, so. And doing it from the beginning, it's a good time to get it done.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Okay, that all for this witness. Okay, we'll hear from your colleague. I've forgotten his name, but I'll know.
One V H B traffic engineer, and my office address, nine forty Main Campus Drive in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm trying to just answer some traffic calming questions I heard, and great comments from council members and from staff. We definitely take safety into consideration. You know, first thing we did is compared to the current zoning, and the pro-development can generate less than a third of being allowed, you know, so that's a great traffic reduction. But secondly, you know, for cut-through traffic, firstly, traffic circle, I think I talked about the impact of traffic circle. It's related to the design, deflecting angle, you know, people have to make that twist and turn, and then to make that movement, that can slow down traffic. So you definitely made a good point. You know, follow-up design process will make sure, you know, that a design, you know, the different angle is designed properly. And back to the number of traffic calming devices, I think, you know, one thing we can consider to add additional traffic calming device. Second thing, I think I talked to Charlie in the afternoon, if there's a crosswalk or sidewalk, you know, on both sides, we can do a raised crosswalk. So basically, that's more, you know, visible and better traffic calming device.
Make sure. Okay. Make sure. Okay. Okay, was there anything else from the applicant at this time? Where did Jeff go? Oh, there he is. Okay, that's fine. Okay, you're good. All right, this is a public hearing. Were there persons here who desired to speak to this issue this evening? Go to one of the mics, maybe the one behind you there, if you don't mind, sir, and state your name and address, please.
Again, we still have concerns about change, and I, I guess everybody, 5502 Spring Road, Lake Medlin, Melinda Young. And I just wanted to be sure that you received the letter from Melinda that she sent y'all last night in an email.
Right here.
Okay. We all have concerns about the change, and, and I see they're trying to make it better by going from 59 units to 50, and that they've changed from coming down our road where it's real snake-like anyway. And I see that they've applied to have a, a larger, taller fence, which again, with our property, where we're at, an eight-foot fence isn't going to be tall enough because it looks right in our door the way that, that ground slopes are right over in our backyard where we have a pool now. And my wife's the better speaker about all this, and she's told you everything in the letter that we think about and things we want you to think about. And that's basically all I have to say from the neighborhood themselves.
Okay, thanks, sir. We appreciate your time. Else who desire to speak on this matter? Identify yourself first, and then you may speak.
Good evening. My name's Cindy Fleming. I live at 106 Walden Court in Garner, 27529. And I don't know if you all have ever been over to that property, but it's very narrow. It looks like a landing strip of an airport. From my backyard, you can, in the wintertime, you can see the back of the Garner High School. I'm kind of located like on this side of the biggest batch of townhomes. And my concern, like Lake said, you know, or everything his wife addressed in that letter, is just having basically 10 feet from my property line is where the construction, they're going to save 10 feet of trees, like from me to where Lake's sitting, and then they're going to put up this fence, and then a few feet on the other side of that, they're going to take down the rest of them. And ironically, our subdivision is called the Woodlands, and it's off of Timber Drive. So I think, I think there's a little bit of irony in that, considering they want to take down all those woods to put up all those townhomes. And I've lived there 15 years, and I'm not real happy about it, and I just want that on the record. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll hear from another person or two.
Thank you, council members. My name is James Upchurch, and I own property at 1411 Old Buckhorn Road. Hard to see, don't really see the property owners very well on the map, I guess. It's in the south side where the, where the landscape buffer is, and then you get the pink representation of the townhomes. So I had several concerns, and I want to just voice them. A lot of them centered around privacy and access, and I'm interested to know how tall the townhomes are and what they're going to be, and that has been looked into from the applicant. The fence that they're talking, she said a fence, but I heard a wall. I don't know what kind of material we're talking about. And is that going to be sufficient? Because we've, I've been there for 20 years, 21 years, whatever it's been, 19. And so just having someone to look into your backyard, which you've never had before, is a concern if that would be the case. So I don't know what the calculation is. I can do that if necessary, but we have some engineers that should be able to do that. So, so that's one concern that I've got there is just, not just the change, but really the change in privacy, the change in access, the change in noise when you're in your backyard where you just don't have what you had before, given the fact that new neighborhoods and are being approved right behind you. It seemed like some of the numbers also about the buffer is a little bit in one place. I think it said it was going to increase it from 30 to 50, and then another place it said it was going to decrease it from 30 to 24. And so it's just kind of, you know, confusing to understand exactly what kind of buffer we're talking about, how wide that would be from the south side there, separating those, the, the approach, the, the, the property that's wanting to be proposed there. And another comment that I've got is that I noticed that at least the, it appears, it doesn't, it doesn't really depict it very well on the map. I don't think so in terms of, I can assume that the straight black line underneath the green buffer is a fence line or a wall line. I'm just assumption that is, except for what there would be. That's on the property owner's side, so therefore the townhomes may get to enjoy the, a view of the landscape. And then you get a wall or a fence where the property owners are seeing the fence or the wall right up front, and we're having to kind of say, okay, you know, why do we get the wall versus the, the landscape, you know, or the, the 24-foot buffer? So I know that there's some decision that had to be made in terms of all these things, but certainly a lot of things are in favor of the townhomes, it appears to me, in this situation. And I know there's growth everywhere. We've been talking about it all night. There's growth in Raleigh, growth in Garner, and things of that nature. But, you know, we're certainly leaving up to this body to, to measure a balance between what happens with impervious surface, happens with townhomes infilling, things of that nature, and particularly how they affect existing communities that have been here for way longer than they've been. So one question that I do have that may not be able to be answered tonight would be, how long do I have to live in the community before it doesn't change drastically where privacy and just, you know, plain living in your backyard, on your, on your back porch, doesn't have to be disturbed in such a way and get approved? So those are all my comments and statements.
Make sure. Did, did you have an opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting?
I didn't attend a neighborhood meeting, but I called and talked to some of the representatives and some of the folks who were making the application in details, and I expressed those, those thoughts.
Okay, that's fine. I, I, I had assumed if you'd attended the meeting, some of the questions that you asked tonight about the fencing and other things probably would have been answered there, but I wasn't there, so I don't know.
I don't know. Would they have been answered, the applicants here now?
Okay, I, I think we need to get the applicant to answer, because on this map, sir, the wooden fence is against the townhomes and the vegetation's on your side. That's what it shows on here. The solid wooden fence backs up to the townhomes, and the landscape buffer is left on your side. But we'll get the applicant to, to confirm that, and also the, the width of that buffer.
My eyes are not as good as, you know.
Well, I'm sitting here, I had to look at it really close, too, to follow the line. That's what it looks like it's showing. We want to confirm that because your question's a good point. You shouldn't have to have the wall behind your stuff. I agree.
Thank you.
I think the applicant will try to answer that question for us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, make sure.
Just for the record, do you need my name and address again?
I guess not. Well, yeah. Mr. Clerk, are you satisfied? Do we have, yeah, okay. Go right ahead.
And the question about the fence, the fence would be at the rear of the proposed townhomes, and we would have that undisturbed landscape buffer between the townhomes and the existing properties to the south, the average width of that buffer being 24 and a half feet per our application. And I guess to further that, there's also a rear setback that has to be from that fence line to the building itself, which is also in Jeff's presentation.
That setback is, so, so we'll all have it here?
So we have a 25-foot rear setback. And further clarifying the statements earlier during my presentation, the 30 feet that was mentioned is the distance between the actual building blocks for five-unit townhome blocks. So we're increasing the open space between the building blocks latitudinally or longitudinally as it goes down our proposed road.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anything else?
Just, I think it's good to clarify the, the wooden fence and the, because that's a specific question, I think, of you and also the lady on Walden Court would know that the fence is not against their property, the fence is against the townhome property, and the buffer is left. The undisturbed buffer is left backing up to those single-family homes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay.
Come back to the mic if you don't mind and ask it. Very briefly, if the, if the, if the fence that's being built is closer on the townhome side, then I'd like to be interested in the height of those townhomes, if they're a double layer, so that if I'm living upstairs, I can't just look right into somebody's yard. And so that fence needs to be really looked at in terms of its height. That's my, that's my comment.
Okay, can you answer that, sir?
The maximum height of these townhomes would be two stories, and based off the existing topography, the site does fall off for a significant portion of the site down towards the existing ball fields. And so the hope there would be that depending on the final site design, that we could even lower that average height, but the buildings themselves would be two stories.
Thank you. Okay, I'll hear from you. Go ahead.
Doris Hodder, 1409 Old Buckhorn Road, Garner. I agree with the other residents about lack of privacy and having bright lights shining into the bedroom. And so, because I wasn't able to go to the community meeting, so I don't know what was discussed there. But I'm just concerned with loss of privacy and actually the loss of the natural habitat for the animals in the creek and the traffic and public safety and property values. And I guess all those concerns were addressed at the other meeting, but I don't know it. But I just want to just agree with the concerns of everyone else, that we don't like it.
Right. I think we've probably heard the viewpoints of the, the neighborhood there, and certainly we've heard from the applicant. Okay, go quickly, if you will.
Just real quickly, my name's John Weiss. I live at 1409 Old Buckhorn Road, right next door to Mr. Upchurch and right down the street from these lovely people that live on Walden Court. And this impacts the back of our property line, which will impact our property value, and it will increase noise. When they're doing construction, it's going to be very loud. At this point, if you look at the picture of the bottom of the buffer there, our house is right smack dab in the center of that. We're basically right above where it says sand filter. It's right up there. So our backyard faces those woods, and when you're looking out our backyard into the woods, you can see the high school through it. Now, if you can see the high school through the woods, a fence that they're going to put up, that's only eight foot tall, is not going to be adequate to block a view from a 20-foot tall townhome viewing down into our property, because I can see the high school through all those woods. So a 25-foot barrier of woods with an eight-foot tall fence, even if they approved an eight-foot tall fence, that's still not going to be adequate. Plus, I totally disagree with tearing all the woods down, because after all, our community is called the Woodlands for a reason, and this is a natural habitat for animals, and there's all kinds of other issues that, you know, worry me about this, you know, crime. How about the safety of the children at the school when people go zooming through this neighborhood and mow children down from that school? And I don't want the, the development there at all. And I concur with all the residents in the neighborhood about not putting this up at all, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Okay, I'm about ready to close the public hearing, and as counsel knows, we're expected or anticipated to refer this to the planning commission, so it'll come back. Any other person? I think we've heard from everybody who wanted to speak. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, what say you? If you want to discuss it briefly, we will, and then I want a motion after that. Any other questions, comments amongst yourselves? Okay.
Just so that it's on the record, and he did mention the reduction in the buffers on the north perimeter of the property from 15 to 10 and a half feet, and the fence, and the fence is less relevant on the northern side of the property, because there are also woods over there, so it's a little less consequential buffer size. But the buffering on the northwest part of the property, working with staff to make sure that that is maintained and contiguous. And I do have one question about the, on the southern part of the property. That, that buffer was reduced as well in, in exchange for sort of the fence. The, the buffering there, does that include not just the trees, but also other landscape screening? Or is that, or is the fence the screening? I'm asking the applicant. I'm looking, it looks like I'm looking at you, but I'm looking behind. Can you answer that question?
Well, okay, yeah. I thought we'd asked all the questions we need to, and we were discussing amongst ourselves. But go ahead, if you don't mind, come back to the mic, if you will.
Do I need to introduce myself again? Just want to make sure.
You're fine. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your question. So where the existing vegetation is sparse and doesn't meet the buffer requirements, it would be supplementally planted in addition to having that fence?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Good. Okay, counsel, unless you have something else, I think it's time to move to the next step, and that is our motion to move this process along.
I approve that we refer conditional, conditional zoning requests, CZMP 22-11, be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton and Mr. Vance, for the second. Counsel, motion is properly before you. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Okay, the motion carries, and we will have this back before it's after the planning commission takes action. Thank you, counsel. Thank you all for the patience that you exhibited and the fine discussion and the decorum that everybody showed. All right, I see the clock on the wall says it is nine o'clock. Mr., I'm not picking on you, but I'm wondering if we might, should take a little recess here and refresh before we start with your hearing. So I'm going to declare no more than maybe a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back by 9:15, hopefully. Everybody try to do that. Thank you. Everybody try to do that. Thank you. If you will come to order, please, and I'm going to declare we're back in session. Try to move right on through our agenda. We're at item three under public hearings. And this is the Everstead at White Oak. I had Mr. Treesenberg on here, but I see Mr. Bowie is here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, go right ahead if you will.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I will be presenting the Everstead at White Oak, conditional zoning CZMP-22-03. The applicant is David Phillips, LCD Acquisitions LLC. The property is owned by Garner Land Company LLC and is located at Zero Timber Drive East. The tract size is 45.38 plus or minus acres. This is a Tier 2 request, includes a master plan plus written conditions. The request is for to conditionally rezone the lot, 45.3 acres, from single-family residential R40, which is now residential R2, to master plan multifamily MF2-C260 conditional, to be adopted as multifamily AMF-A-C260 if approved. And it is for the development of a residential community. The applicant has offered several architectural and other conditions. Here we have an aerial photo of the site. And here is a street view of the location. The adjacent zoning is to the north, Timber Drive East, townhomes and apartments, which is zone multifamily B. To the south is vacant, Jurgen Foundation Charitable Trust, which is rural agricultural. To the east is Penske Truck Leasing, and that is light industrial. And to the west is Abilis Solar Apartments, MFB. Here we have some rezoning cases that have occurred in the area. The existing zoning summary, it is currently rural agricultural. The RE district primarily accommodates agriculture, civil culture, and rural residential uses. And properties on RE are typically found in areas outside of the town corporate limits, where public water and sewer service is not readily available. The applicant has proposed the following uses. He has reduced the number of uses from six to six out of possible 21. There are two-family dwelling, townhome, townhouse condominium, duplex, and multifamily, and civic community center. He also, as I stated, has offered up other zoning conditions. Overlay note, the property falls within the limited access highway overlay. This overlay district has additional development standards applicable to either side of I-40 within Garner zoning jurisdiction. None of the restricted overlay uses are included in this request. Community information, Timber Drive East is a major corridor with a significant amount of daily traffic. The rezoning site is within close proximity to commercial center, medical facilities, and other high-density uses. A traffic impact analysis was, is required and was performed on April of this year. Timber Drive East will be extended through the length of the site to the southern boundary of the parcel in conjunction with Everstead at White Oak Development. Community information, a neighborhood meeting was held on August 18th of this year. It was held at the Garner Senior Center and one person was in attendance. And there were 14 properties within the notification radius. Here we have a master plan of the proposal. See, it has townhouse-style units. And to the upper right, single and paired cottages. Here we have a berm concept, pool deck concept, and backyard concept. MF2 generally, 5,000 square feet of development area for the first unit, an additional 3,000 square feet of development area for each additional unit. MF2 single-family detached cluster residential development area limit 2.60 DU per acre. And here you have the setbacks for townhomes as well as apartments. Landscaping buffers, tree canopy, on a sliding scale from 18 to 20% must be met. The master plan envisions 13% canopy via preservation of the remaining, and the remaining 6% to come from new plantings, for a total of 19% minimum. Perimeter buffers, there's a 25-foot buffer along the southern boundary, adjacent to residential undeveloped properties, a 35-foot buffer along western boundary adjacent to single-family, and a 7.5 to 15-foot buffer along western and northern boundary adjacent to multifamily, and a 50-foot buffer along I-40. Tree trees must be provided approximately every 40 feet along all roadways and internal drives. Environment and flood plain, there are no flood plains on the property, but there is a buffer stream in the southwest corner of the site. Stormwater. Everstead at White Oak is a residential master plan and is not, that is not located within the watershed protection area. It is subject to stormwater, stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen as well as water quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 15-year storm events. The master plan proposes two stormwater control measures, and they will satisfy all water quality and water quantity requirements at the site. Water and sewer, the site will be served by Cedar Riley Water and Sewer Infrastructure, and water will connect to and be extended from existing lines along Timber Drive. Parks and open space, they're required to have 10%, which translates to 4.16 acres minimum, and anticipated is 13%, 5.50 acres. The open space will be owned and maintained by the HOA. And recreation will include clubhouse, trails, swimming pools, and open areas, and a dog park. Lighting will be required to meet UDO requirements for LED fixtures. Plan consistency, when considering rezoning requests, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. Specifically, a comprehensive plan is only advisory in nature and has no independent regulatory effect, nor does it expand, diminish, or alter the scope of the town of Garner UDO. A determination of inconsistency with the plan does not preclude a rezoning request from being found to be reasonable. In those cases, where the request is deemed inconsistent yet reasonable, an amendment to the comprehensive plan is automatically made upon approval of the request. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon advice of the planning commission, town council must also approve a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness can include the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted plans and policy providing guidance on parks, greenways, and cultural resources may serve as sources as well. You may find that the zoning request follows the efforts to achieve specific goals and objectives stated within these plans and policies, and thereby render said requests a reasonable one. The converse may also apply. Staff recommends that once the town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request CZMP-22-03 be referred to the planning commission for the review and recommendation regarding plan consistency. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Counsel, questions? I'll start on this end down here. Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Mr. Dellinger?
For the applicant's presentation.
Anything?
I do believe the applicant is here to present their case.
Roberts?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Take your hand and address for the record, please, sir.
Members of council, Keith Roberts, 202 Bonica Creek Drive in Garner. Appreciate the thorough presentation that staff has given. And as mentioned, we are here for questions tonight. Many folks are here tonight who are part of the tonight. Many folks are here tonight who are part of the development team, so if you have specific questions, it may depend on who may need to be up here speaking, but I just wanted to say we are here, obviously, trying to support this rezoning. And David Phillips with Landmark Development is here. David actually contacted me in June of 2021, and we've been working on this pretty much nonstop since '21 to get here tonight, to make sure I's are dotted and T's are crossed, and excited about the opportunity that Landmark's bringing. Very unique opportunity to the town, unique type of product. Feel like it's a great area for it here. It gives the opportunity for Timber Drive East to be further extended, as we're all hoping that it will in the future head down towards White Oak Road. I know David is here, and he's anxious to speak and tell you about himself and more about Landmark and their product and what their plans are for, for the property, but again, feels like the zoning fits in an area where it's basically isolated between apartments and I-40, so a lot of benefit, I think, here to the, to the town and the community. So, we're here for questions, and I may let, if it's okay, let David go ahead and just speak and introduce himself, and then depending on what questions you have, one of us can, can address it.
Okay, yeah, hang around. We may have questions for you.
David Phillips, 349 Haskell Road, Atlanta, Georgia 30309. Mayor and counsel, I appreciate you taking our application into consideration. I know it's getting late, so I'll keep my remarks brief. I just have a handful of bullets I want to walk through with everyone. You may not be familiar with Landmark Properties, so I just wanted to take a minute to talk about our company and the development we're proposing. We were founded in Athens, Georgia in 2004. Landmark's development's initially focused on the southeast, but in 2010, we expanded, and now we're nationwide. We have more than $10 billion in assets under management across the entire country. Landmark is not just the developer of the project. We're also the general contractor, we're the property manager, and we're the owner, which means we focus on the details and quality throughout the process and to ensure long-term value of the project. The Everstead at White Oak is going to be targeting two primary demographics. First and foremost, empty nesters. We have a significant number of one-story units. They're labeled on your site plan as single impaired cottages. We refer to them as ranches. That's important because we believe the empty nester community or the empty nester population is sometimes overlooked, so what we've done is given a product that has the master, living, everything on the main level. We've also, we're presenting a gated community, which is, what we found is very important to our empty nesters. Young families are the other demographic we're proposing to target. They like the two-story product. They like the extra storage space and the attached garages that are owned what is labeled as townhouses. And I do want to clarify, these are going to be rental units. They're not going to be for sale. Something that makes our property unique to Garner and to most municipalities is that 100% of our homes will have a ground-level entry. They'll have private fenced-in backyards, and they're going to have at least two parking spaces per unit. We believe parking is essential in maintaining quality of life. Nothing's more frustrating than coming home at night and not having a place to park when you're at your house. We're big advocates of enjoying the outdoors, so we're investing a significant amount of money into outdoor amenities. You can see on the site plan, I'll just call out some of them. We are going to develop more than a mile of walking trails and sidewalks, two swimming pools, a 15,000-square-foot green space that's a town green. We've got a frisbee field, bocce courts, beanbag toss, playground, dog park, et cetera. And like I mentioned, every house has a private fenced-in backyard, which is a significant amenity to every resident. In addition to that, we're also providing a 3,500-square-foot clubhouse on the west site that would serve as the main leasing office where onsite management would be located, fitness center, business center, et cetera. We also have, on the east side, backing up to the interstate, you could see we have a, another cabana slash pool house and swimming pool over there as well. So, again, I wanted to keep my remarks short, but feel free to ask me any questions, and thanks again for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Counsel, your opportunity to ask questions at this time. Mr. Singleton, start with you.
Yes, so the single and paired cottages are all one-story?
Yes, sir.
Are those for lease also?
Yes, sir.
So, everything here is, are leased product, none are sold?
Correct. We don't think that it's appropriate to put for-sale housing against the interstate at this location. Also, you can tell by the site, we have a 165-foot wide Duke Power energy easement with high voltage lines going through the middle of the site. In addition, we're extending Timber Drive. That essentially chops the site up into four different quadrants, and it's that coupled with the topography, the wetlands in the southwest corner that take up an acre or so. We have large setbacks buffered against I-40. We have building setbacks on both sides of Timber Drive. Once you start taking all those items into consideration, which are necessary regardless of what hap, what we're proposing as our product, this just really doesn't work for single-family for-sale housing.
I will have right now there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The single and paired cottages, I'll say that's a very good idea. That's a big thing, especially those getting up in age and not having to climb stairs, and that, I think, and on the outside, it, it looks good. I appreciate your straightforwardness on exactly what you're doing and why you're doing it, and, and that's all I got right now, Mr. Mayor.
Dellinger? Okay.
I have a few questions. Thank you for the presentation. Our future land use map designates this as a mixed land use category, a mixed-density neighborhood that should include commercial. Why does it not include any commercial in compatibility with our future land use plan?
I have Neil here as our land use attorney. He can speak to compatibility, but I'm just going to say from a developer's standpoint, we're down at the end of Timber Drive. All the retail is at the other end of this road. We don't believe this is viable for retail, and the, the focus on the retail really needs to be up at the front of the property, at the White Oak Shopping Center, and the new development that's happened at the interchange. So, Neil, perhaps you can speak to the, I guess, the legality of that.
Good evening at this point, I think. This, Neil Gosch with the Morningstar Law Group, 700 West Main Street in Durham. And to answer your question, I mean, I think it's pretty much in line with what David just said. I mean, the problem, I think, with this site as far as a commercial opportunity, we've got a lot of frontage on I-40, which obviously we're not going to get access from I-40 to this property. And yes, there's a lot of traffic on Timber Drive, but this will be the end of Timber Drive. And so, this, from a pass-by proposition, there isn't pass-by traffic that can actually make it to the site, which makes it challenging from like a retail standpoint. Moreover, we have worked with staff on this project, and, you know, as I understand it, I think staff has the opinion, and so do we, that this plan is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, and, you know, I think there are a lot of reasons why this site might not work for strict mixed-use. But the corridor itself, I agree with David, what he said earlier, the corridor itself, you're going to get mixed-use on this corridor, but we're kind of at the end, and sandwiched in between I-40 makes it very difficult with no pass-by traffic.
Have you all ever done any mixed-use development?
I can let David speak to Landmark's development.
Yes, with $10 billion in assets, we've got a fair amount of mixed-use development under our belt. For the most part, though, it's vertical mixed-use, where it's high-rise between five and 45 stories tall. This product doesn't really lend itself to mixed-use, and frankly, I don't know how everybody else feels, but when I come home at the end of the day, I want to drive into a residential community, have it nice and gated, have a pretty entry and some privacy. I don't want a bunch of dumpsters looking out my back door where I'm backing up to commercial in front of me. And this location obviously doesn't make sense for vertical mixed-use.
Why, obviously? If it's all, if Timber Drive will connect through eventually, this will be in the center of other residential, and it, the, before I was even on council, a lot of professional people spent a lot of time developing our future land use map and indicated this as a mixed-use, this 40-some-plus acres, to have a commercial component to it, and that's viable from a fiscal standpoint from the town to generate more commercial revenue. And so, I'm wondering why you're just going to go straight residential, not do a phased project as the town grows out. Gives me a lot of pause to go against our future land use map.
Understand, appreciate that. Let's see. Financing a project in this environment is extraordinarily challenging. I'm sure everybody's kept up with interest rates. They've spiked significantly over the last couple of months. Makes getting a deal done very difficult. You're not going to finance single-family housing. We're not going to finance a commercial deal here. It's just not feasible. And I'm not trying to debate you. I've just done this long enough to know when I can get a deal done with commercial components, which I'm doing in multiple jurisdictions across the country, but again, they're very urban. They're sitting on top of metro transit stations, et cetera. So, this location being down at the end of the road really doesn't lend itself, in my professional opinion, to mixed-use.
I mean, you guys have developed mixed-use properties before. You, you mentioned a couple things that in locations where you are doing it are more urban settings. I, I think probably, which you didn't mention, I just want to make sure if you agree, one of the key components of mixed-use or commercial development also is that it's at a key intersection. That is an issue here. This is, there is no intersection. This is the extension of Timber Drive, sandwiched in between I-40. There's no key intersection coming through, like in East-West Road, that...
Yeah, that's true. We're have, I mean, we have the same circumstances that the apartments next door have, and the ones next door to that have, which they don't have mixed-use components either. I don't remember, I don't know what the future land use map said about those properties, but I do know we're contiguous with them, and we're asking for similar zoning.
Questions right now?
Okay, Mr. Vance, anything?
No questions.
Okay, I'll go back over here.
Yes, sir. Good to go.
I think it's saying we're the end of the road. Every development that's come along here, the ones to the north and east of you, or whatever beside you, has been the end of the road. I mean, Timber Drive will continue, and I agree with Mr. Dellinger. Timber Drive, you can get on it, and it'll take you straight into downtown Raleigh, in a straight shot. So, I, I agree with what he's saying. My, one of my concerns is, is he mentioned is maximizing the value of the property. I'm assuming you didn't consider apartments here because there's so many apartments as you approach this property. That's something that, I'm, I'm making an assumption here. Why don't you explain that?
Sure. So, to, we're getting it money. I know you're referring to money when you talk about tax base and commercial. This is rental. We're essentially a commercial project. We're held to commercial standards. We're paying massive taxes that you're not going to reap if this were a single-family development behind a couple of building pads. We did look at this for multifamily. We looked at it for stacked-flat apartments. We looked at it for sale housing, and all of our analyses just indicated this was the highest and best use of the project, or of the property. What we are proposing is a different product type that the town of Garner hasn't seen, or at least I'm not aware of. All of the townhomes and one-story homes that, that I'm aware of, for the most part anyway, are for sale, and this provides a nice product that is for rent. It fills a need in the market that we believe is there.
All right, thank you.
Okay, back this way. Mr. Dellinger?
Questions? I have some concerns about the location of the tree preservation. It seems to be just tucked away from the actual neighborhood so that it provides no actual character or cooling or, you know, aesthetic benefit to the residents. It seems really like an afterthought and not really incorporated into the development, which is sort of the purpose of having the tree canopy in the preservation piece. So, big flaw, I think.
If I may, we were instructed to not show a ton of detail on this plan. I'm happy to have a landscape architect prepare a more detailed plan that would, if, if the town council moves us forward with the planning board, I'd be more than happy to present that at the planning board. We do, I'm a big fan of landscaping. I don't like doing code minimum landscape plans. I see civil engineers do it all the time, and it's really frustrating. Nobody wants to live in a community where you drive down the street and there's no trees along the street. I want to live in a community where there's some shade. I want to live in a community where I have a backyard and a place to park my car and a place to call home, and I feel like this accomplishes that goal, even though the plan doesn't necessarily show every single tree we intend to install.
Final question is related to your neighborhood meeting efforts?
Yes, sir.
And what those were, and what the results of that were?
Well, I'm going to let Neil respond to that. He handled the mailings.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we sent out mail notice to, in the required radius, I think it was mentioned earlier, I think it was something like 14, 15 properties that were. In, in addition to that, I will say, David and his team actually went around to some of the surrounding property owners, talked to them directly. We did only have one neighbor, neighboring property owner show up to the, to the neighborhood meeting. I guess I would say that's who was interested in, in talking about the project, and we had a great conversation with that individual. They were there for like an hour? Yeah, I mean, they were there for like an hour, and we were able to have a, a pretty intimate conversation with that, with, with them. You said, like, what were the results, I think? Is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, just that neighborhood meetings are an effort to get the community involved early in the discussion, and it seems like you only had a property owner and no other resident show up and didn't make any other efforts to do outreach to people who would be impacted by the project.
Well, I mean, respectfully, we, we did do what the UDO requires in that regard, and more.
The minimum.
Well, and more. I mean, David and his team specifically went out to, to talk to property owners, and, and did, and I, and I know we have followed up with, what is it, a Sol tear? Abilis Solar? We followed up with, with the folks, I think they're kind of north of us or west of us. We followed up with them since the neighborhood meeting as well. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, there, if you're suggesting that there weren't a lot of people who came to the meeting, that's true, but it's not that we hadn't tried to contact neighboring property owners or the community in general.
And I would add to that. I'm not hiding from anybody. We're really proud of our development. We think it's a great fit for the town of Garner. We have had follow-up conversations with Grant, one of the managers at the adjacent apartment community, and Grant has been very open with us, that they're very supportive of this. They think it's very complimentary to the neighborhood because it's not more stacked-flat apartments. It's not more, you park, you walk up three flights of stairs, and you're exhausted by the time you get up there. This is a very interesting product, and while it may be low-density at six and a half units an acre, given the hardships we have with the electrical easement, the overlay, the wetlands, the road that we have to build through the middle of the property, the large setbacks, et cetera, those, those all kind of culminated in this vision for the property. So, again, I, I respect your questions, counselor, but we did do our best to meet with as many people as we can. If there's someone specific that you'd like us to meet with, I'm happy to meet with them prior to the planning board, and I will spend as many hours on the phone or in person as they want. If there's a neighbor to the south of us that wants to meet with us, I think that's undeveloped land, but Mr. Jurgen owns it, I'd be more than happy to meet with Mr. Jurgen anytime.
Okay. Just give other council members a chance, if anybody else has anything else.
I think, you know, whether you agree with it or not, I think it's an excellent presentation. You know, we, we all got our thoughts about where you want commercial mixed in or not, and you going through White Oak Shopping Center, every restaurant, every store you can think of is right there, then you go... Then you go, get your shopping in, and this is more of a tranquil area. Everything down that way is either apartments or what have you. And, uh, and be honest with you, if, if I was, at my age, gonna get one of these parrot cottages, I, I would not wanna be right next to a commercial development. That's why I'm moving there, is to get away from that. It's right up the road if I want it, and it's surrounded by apartments. And, uh, it's a unique presentation. And, uh, yeah, White Oak Road, it's probably gonna continue on down eventually. And, uh, as it gets near there, the, the whole, Ian, might be another development, a commercial, who knows? But, uh, I think we've had a good presentation. I don't think these folks have hid anything. It's, it's just my opinion, like, we all got one. And, uh, and I think we should refer it to the planning commission and let them do their due diligence and bring it back to us, then we can talk about it some more.
Okay, uh, counsel, I'm ready to see if there are other persons who came here to speak briefly on the matter, unless you have any other questions for this witness here. Okay, none. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, were there other persons, uh, representing the applicant that desired to speak? Mr. Roberts, was that everyone? Okay, all right. Anybody else here to speak on, on this particular project? Okay, seeing and hearing none, um, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And, counsel, I think the matter is properly for you for the action that is recommended here, so a motion would be in order.
I move that CZ MP 22-00 be referred to the planning commission for their review recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Thank you. Okay, motions properly made and seconded by, uh, Ms. Dellinger. Uh, all council members who are in favor of the motion, would you vote aye?
I have a comment.
I'm sorry, okay, okay, go, go right ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm going to vote no on this, uh, mostly because it is in direct contravention of our future land use plan. And it may not, it might be the highest and best use for the applicant, but I don't believe in the long run is the highest and best use for Garner. And we can wait for something better. That is my comment for the record.
I believe I'm correct in saying this matter will come back before council, before a final decision has been made. So, okay. All right, the motion is still before you then, so, uh, all who favor the motion, vote aye?
Aye.
Any who oppose? No?
No.
Okay. The chair declares that, uh, three votes were aye and two votes were no, so the motion carries. Um, okay, I declare this matter has been resolved for now. The matter will be referred to the planning commission, and then we'll come back to this council. Thank you all for your time on this. I know it's taken a while to get there, so. Item J, committee reports. I'm not aware of any, are there any? None, okay. Uh, Mr. Manager, I recognize you for manager reports.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, just, uh, few events to announce, uh, just to keep it on everybody's radar and, uh, make sure the public knows all the good things going on in Garner. Um, first is the Garner Night Market will start back on Friday, September twenty-third, from five to nine in the downtown area. Um, as part of that event, um, our pedestrian, our consultants, that's, um, been employed to help us with the pedestrian plan, will be gathering input, so they'll have a, a table or booth set up where they'll gather input about the, um, proposed pedestrian plan. Garner Big Sweep and Litter Sweep will happen, um, Saturday, September twenty-fourth, and it will begin at eight-thirty at the shelter in White Deer Park, Holly Shelter. And that's where groups will, um, go out into the community and help pick up litter. And also, there will be groups, um, cleaning up the waterways and along some of the streams and things like that. So, everyone is welcome to come out and, um, help with that volunteer effort to keep Garner clean. Uh, Garner Firemen's Festival, it's Saturday, October the first. Uh, it will be a parade and a festival. They usually do a live burn and some other demonstrations, and they have vendors out there, uh, at the Fire Station One, on the corner of Main Street and Highway fifty. Uh, and that's October first, from eleven to six P.M. And the parade will start at two. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, to Jody Miller, uh, to talk about the Talk of the Town and updates on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just to briefly highlight a few items on your September, uh, Talk of the Town monthly report. I just wanted to make the council aware that the town will be engaging with City Explained for the Cost of Municipal Services Studies. If you recall, this is a request that came out of the retreat that we held in the springtime. And so, we'll be partnering with City Explained, uh, due in part to the synergy and cohesion that it has with that group in the CLU study that is currently underway with the town as well. So, City Explained will be analyzing cost of services and revenue generated both on the residential side and the non-residential side. So, just wanted to make you aware that we were able to find a strong partner to do that work for us. Under Park and Plug Update, Duke's Energy's Park and, uh, Park and Plug Program has accepted a second site in Garner at the Recreation Center. If you recall, last month, we were able to share with you for EV chargers. We were able to move forward with a site here at the Town Hall, Library, Campus Area. Uh, we've been able to secure potentially a second site at the Recreation Center, and staff is working with Duke Energy on looking at the feasibility of locations there. So, we're very excited about that as well. And then just to briefly go over your monthly analytics for the Garner Info App. We had forty-nine requests over the last thirty days or so. You'll start to see the seasonal change in the types of requests that we're getting. If you recall, in the spring and summer, most of our requests were regarding tall grass and weeds. Now, we're starting to see more requests regarding, um, junk vehicles on private property. So, we just sorted the seasonality of the kind of requests we're getting. Um, of the requests that have been received, about ninety-six percent have been completed or addressed in some way. And you'll see our Public Works Department and our Inspections Department are very busy addressing some of the issues and requests that come in through the gap. So, there are just a few things we wanted to highlight for you this evening, and certainly if there are any questions that council has, we're happy to answer that for you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Miller. Questions for Ms. Miller regarding this report or other matters? Anybody?
You mentioned electrical, uh, plug-ins, and for those with electric cars, uh, Walmart now, uh, I think they got four put out here on four oh one, out there, electrical plug. I don't, I don't know if they're operational yet, but I noticed some, that's like in front of the Garden Center, there's about four of them over there, so, that come out to clear blue, so.
Personally, who has electric vehicle?
They do.
Probably no more, but not too distant future.
This table has one, you do know that, don't you?
Uh, I'm sure.
Mr. Dellinger does.
That's what I was referring to. It's up on you.
All-electric?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, for the, the, uh, Cost of Municipal Services Study, what is the timeline on that engagement? And then the timeline for some sort of results, and sort of in parallel with the CLU? What's, what are we looking at?
So, so once the contract is approved and we have that in hand, it could take anywhere from three to six months to complete the study. And, um, one of the great synergies with this particular group with City Explained is they're able to use a lot of the data that's gonna be collected as part of the CLU study. So, assuming that we get this executed in the next week or so, I would hope to have a, at least a draft report by the end of the calendar year, beginning of next year, as part of, um, not only the information and report with the CLU study, but also as we start thinking about preparing for next year's budget. So, we're trying to get those, that timing aligned appropriately.
My recommendation with that, um, that it may be beneficial, since we're doing all this, spending all this money on analyzing the stuff, and with the CLU and municipal services, is that we pump the brakes a little on some of the projects so that we can get some preliminary. We don't have to wait till the very end to see what the results are, but hopefully the consultants can give us some insights sooner, that we can sort of, early signaling. Um, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to invest all this time and money in community input, and then just continue business as usual. Uh, so I hope we take that into consideration. I think if, there'll be great value to come out of both of them, but it's a little wasted if we don't, um, take advantage of it with what's ahead of us, so.
Okay, anything else for Ms. Miller? Thank you very much. Did you have anything else, Mr. Mayor?
I had several more, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, so while we're talking about CLU, the Planning Department and the City Explained consultants, they'll be holding a community character workshop on Thursday, September twenty-ninth, from four to eight at the Recreation Center. And it's a drop-in style event. Public can come anytime during that timeframe. And, uh, this is to kick off our Character and Land Use Elements update to our Garner Forward Plan. And participants, they'll be able to offer input on topics such as community character, development, open space, and, and other topics related to development and growth. Um, next, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Mr. John Hodges, so he can give you an update on, um, some of the things we've been talking about over the last few months related to Timber Drive, speed, and pedestrian access.
Mayor, members of council, following the last meeting when we reported we had not had an update from DOT, um, DOT did reach out and give us an update, um, on the speed limit change on Timber Drive from extending that thirty-five mile per hour zone to Vandora Springs that was approved by DOT. There'd been a backlog in their sign installation division. They're going to try to fast-track that. Um, and just a little less than two weeks ago, they said they hope to get that done in two weeks. I have not seen the signs go up, but we'll be checking those throughout the week to see if that happens in that timeframe. Similarly, they were going to replace some signs along, uh, some other parts of the corridor that were either outdated, sized, or hard to see. They hope to do those within that same time period. And lastly, they were gonna come back and install some pedestrian signage at the crosswalks. They've recently gone out and tweaked the crosswalk timings to make those align better, especially for folks crossing over to go to Timber Drive Elementary. But they do have some additional pedestrian signage that they hope to get installed soon as well. So, after long time of waiting, we at least do have some updates that they're trying to prioritize, the sign installations and the, the remainder of that Timber Drive work.
I had to confirm, John, that the speed limit from Vandora on Timber, uh, heading out, uh, east is all gonna be thirty-five until it gets on the other side of there, where it picks up to forty-five.
Yes, it will be. So, it's officially that now, but there's no signage. And so, once the signage is installed, we'll be working to enforce that.
And does it pick up forty, well, if you're going in the opposite direction, does it pick up forty-five right after you go beyond, um, Vandora?
Yes, yes. Heading, heading north or west.
That was my understanding.
I've asked a question, and we've visited this issue before, and do you know?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
I've tried before, and I'm glad we're having, and glad it's happening now, but it doesn't make sense.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Manager?
Uh, one other item, just to give you an update on the Vandora Springs Road project. Um, the plan is for the Vandora Springs Road to be closed, um, so that some, um, work could be done across the, crossing the, uh, road, I think some, some pipe work. And, um, that is still tentative, um, right now, because, um, the contractors had to get DOT to approve their, their closing plan as far as rerouting of the resident traffic and any other traffic. Hoping that's gonna be approved within the next day or so. But if for some reason that does not get approved, that could delay, um, the, uh, the closing of the road and the, the work that they were gonna do. Cause it needs to be done on, um, evenings, um, and weekends. Well, not evenings, but on the less traffic time. So, the plan was to close it from Friday, um, at, uh, six o'clock, I believe, until, uh, Monday at six A.M. And so, if they get that approved, the road will be closed at that time, starting this week. And, uh, there should be signage to, uh, let residents know, um, that that road is closed, and they will need to detour to another route.
So, this is gonna be between Vandora Springs Road and Tiffany Circle. So, will those residents be, the people who live there, will they be, they don't just depend on a sign, somebody to be sure is gonna hang someone on their door, tell them in person, I hope?
As far as I know, no.
There's not currently a plan to hang for door hangers, right?
It's not, it's not that many, and, and this can impact, impact them more than anyone else. How they may have to get home, they may have to go around their elbow to get to their thumb to get home.
Traffic circle, yeah.
I'm just curious.
I'll let Engineer Johnson answer that.
I'm not aware of being a requirement for notification for door hangers, but they will be able to access, they just won't be able to go between Miriam and Timber. So, the detour is more for people that are trying to use the route to get through, because they're gonna have to detour and take Woodland Road around the site, which is about a mile out of their way. Um, but the residents, they'll still have local traffic that can get through, other than that one block between Tiffany Circle and, and Timber. Um, so, we can certainly reach out to the HOA and let them know as well. But most of the signage and the detour is for the commuting traffic that's using the road during peak hours during the week.
I'm just thinking, if it's closed, and the people who live there, and they, they can't head towards, uh, Miriam and, and Tiffany Circle, know that, they should know as much as anyone, because they're gonna be the ones that might get out first thing in the morning trying to go somewhere. I'm just thinking the residents over there, they put up with a bunch of stuff, as you know, we've discussed. I just think they should know firsthand.
We are putting out a, I guess, Rick's gonna be putting out a, a news blast for it as well.
And so, we won't know if this is gonna happen this weekend until this is planned.
If DOT approves their, um...
We're hoping we'll know by tomorrow.
Okay. All right, I might check with you and I, and I'll, I can text a couple of people over there, can get some of the word out. Thank you.
Okay, was that it?
That concludes my reports, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll recognize our, uh, town attorney, if he has a report.
Thank you. I just wanted, uh, to remind you that the Walters Buffalo, the development agreement, uh, that notice of public hearing will go out at the latest this Friday, um, in compliance with at least ten days prior to the public hearing on October third. I did receive, um, as well as the rest of you, received comments from Councilman Dellinger. Those will be provided to, um, Pulte. Obviously, a lot of those concerns can't get resolved in the next two days. Um, so, I suspect that at the public hearing, you'll be either referring it on or making more substantial comments, uh, or perhaps giving feedback at the public hearing about certain, um, issues that have been raised. But if any of, anyone else has some comments, you know, I'll continue to compile them and provide them to Pulte in advance of that hearing.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Um, okay, um, we're moving towards a closed session, but we need to do count of votes. So, uh, I'm gonna start tonight with, uh, Mr. Vance on this.
I have nothing to, to say tonight.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dellinger?
Kind of an old one. Mr. Singleton had brought this up before, and I had as well, about the, in, the, the rezoning signs just being too small. And I kinda would like to get some council consensus on whether or not we need bigger signs that have easier to see and have more information on them. The ones now, now are just a big Z and the phone number, which if you're driving by, they don't have a date on them or time sometimes. Um, and so I just wanna see if there's interest in us investing in some slightly larger rezoning signs.
Okay, um, counsel, what say?
I'm in favor. The date's an issue because you could have a public hearing scheduled, then it gets extended or changed. And so, the date, I can handle, I mean, I know that's tough. But the phone number, it being bigger, I, I wish they were bigger. I agree.
I agree too.
I've seen them one eastern, northern, I've seen them one eastern, northern Carolina town, I'm not saying this, but they've got the Sawhorse, and they've got the huge reflective sign, that thing, that bad boy's about six foot wide. That must take two people to move it and set it up. I'm not saying we need to do that. Uh, that's, that's, and the, the issue with that one is, it's not perpendicular to the road, it's, it's, it's this way, and I'm like, who's gonna see it? I kid you not, this is an eastern, northern Carolina town, a good-sized town that does it that way. I've seen it with my own eyes.
And with regards to the date, having just a blank section on the sign where the date could be interchanged, and, you know, might change, but rarely do public hearing dates change. But I think it's helpful to people to know what day the hearing is, they can see it when they're driving by, and if they wanna find out more, they can. But without a date, people don't really have a idea of when that's gonna occur. The other thing was, uh, the clarification on the Wake Med thing, I might reach out to staff on that, I was a little confused. But without a date, people don't really have an idea of when that's gonna occur. The other thing was the clarification on the Wake Med thing. I might reach out to staff on that. I was a little confused as to what portion of that property they were using or going or planning to use. I think there were some other plans for that property. So I don't know, it seemed a little...
Yeah, I think they stated the whole acreage.
Yeah, and then they said 27, which is a corner.
It's about 27, and if you look at that diagram, and we'll send you their slides, there's sort of in the middle of that, there's a blue bubble that you'll see that's about the 27, and almost in the center, slightly to the west of it. And that's the area that's being proposed as the hub for the hospital. But you're both right. Mr. Cavender stated the entire acreage. The developer who's planning that in conjunction with Wake Med is, and you'll see the other bubbles on there, but they're looking at general bubbles of other uses that would radiate out from the hospital in terms of medical, but then go out to traditional commercial, retail, and residential on the periphery.
Okay, that's just the first time I'd seen that arrangement. Thank you. The last is on the commuter rail, and with that sort of acceleration, are we gonna have a committee or something to more tightly plan out the use in that corridor? It seems like what we have, plan-wise, doesn't necessarily congruent with the timing of that. So I don't know if we're gonna put together a group or something, because I know we've got projects and people wanna do stuff, but I don't know that it necessarily marries up well with the level of intensity that they would like to see in that corridor for...
I know the comp plan had some transit-oriented development components in it, so I don't know... is Jeff still here? I don't know what the plan is to have any further planning around that corridor or not.
We did, in the comp plan, we were planning around the corridor from the conception of the last comp plan. So one of the focus areas was the area at the parking ride station down at Auburn to show some density, transit-oriented development density at the station. And then also with the walk-up station in the downtown area, we're a lot more limited on land availability. But we're, for any opportunities that we've got there, we're, you know, we're keeping transit-oriented development opportunities in mind.
I think it'd be helpful for us to review it. Just I know we've done, there's been some things approved that don't seem congruent with that level of density that we would want. That would be helpful. I'd hate to see us miss opportunities to do density where it's gonna support commuter rail and kinda create more of a, at least a destination in note. I think the thing that struck me most in that presentation was the very small number of future jobs generated in that Garner Circle compared to those other circles. And that can be changed if we plan properly for having more commercial development or mixed use or something like that. We just, we need more jobs here, so people are coming to Garner to work and spend money. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right, Ms. Dellinger.
Had someone call me and ask who is responsible for mowing the yards in the properties on Rand Road that now belong to the VA. There's a few little tiny little rental houses that are now empty. They're behind what used to be the Swift Creek Grocery. And the grass has grown up. I haven't seen it, but they were complaining about how the grass has grown up and what the VA plans to do, and are they going to mow it and keep it looking better?
I'm not sure.
The inspections team is in contact with those property owners fairly regularly and have contacted them several times when complaints like that have come up, so...
I don't think, I think the VA owns that property now. That was their understanding.
Well, the developers that are building it, because the private development is building it for the VA's use. And so the folks that are controlling the property right now, pre-development, our staff has been in contact with, and we'll follow up with them to make sure they continue to do that.
Are they responding?
It's been mowed more than once. I mean, so it's, and they were, Mr. Bees was telling us they were mowed last week, so...
Okay, well, she called last week. Maybe it was mowed after she called. Okay. The trash receptacle on the pole at Creets Road and Garner Road intersection is missing. Is that on purpose?
We'll find out.
Question, how frequently is, is there a schedule to how frequently trash is picked up on various roadways in town, or is it by complaint only?
As far as litter? Yeah, I think a lot of times the litter pickup is, follows the mowing schedule. And so we do have a different schedule depending on different roads.
Okay, Garner Road needs some more attention. It's gotten to the point now where when we walk in the morning, there's just bottles and trash and car parts. And there was some, I forget, I don't even know what it was. It looked like black carbon paper laying in the middle of the road. And it may be things falling off of trucks headed to TTE or something like that, but it's gotten to be worse and worse, and it looks really bad. And that's the main corridor into town. And it was not in good shape for Labor Day weekend at all. So if we could put some attention there, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Singleton.
29th, that's the, yeah, Thursday from four to eight. It's open, kind of a community workshop, it's more of an open house at the Rec Center.
And it's at the Rec Center, okay. So it's on Thursday, the 29th.
Yes, four to eight. Will it be any time in there where there's a formal presentation? Jeff, it's all drop-in? No, okay.
Nothing, Mr.... Nothing? Okay, while Maria's still here, I, I'm excited about the litter sweep and if everything works out, I plan to be a part of that. I'm wondering, though, since I, I'm in Lake Benson Park a lot, maybe you noticed this. Those, what do you call those little, I call them the little side lakes, just, you know, as you go along the trail on the backside down near the lake there. There's one that's covered with a lot of green, but what really bothers me is there, you know, cans and bottles and a few things. Now, I don't think, I don't think you could sweep those from the bank. I don't know if you have to get a small boat or something in there, but over time, they just, I mean, it's not, it's not full of those things, but it's unsightly. Is there a way to get those? You don't have the answer tonight, but it's on my mind since the litter sweep is coming up this weekend. We can talk about that more. I'll take you down there and show them to you. Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have. We are scheduled for a closed session. Somebody can give the site, and we will go into the closed session room unless the people in the audience are leaving. But, well, I just cited, go ahead, yeah, pursuant to General Statutes 143318, 11A3 to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation. Somebody make a motion of that effect?
Still moving.
Okay, second properly made, okay. All in favor of going into closed session pursuant to these General Statutes, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition, so are we good to stay here?
Yeah.
It's over, and we're back into regular open session. I'm going to call on our town attorney, Ms. Jones, who will give a brief overview of our closed session. Please, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During closed session, by consensus, council gave direction to town staff on how to proceed with respect to a potential claim against the town.
Okay, thank you so much. So council, I believe that covers all the items on the regular agenda, and certainly we finished the closed session, so unless there's other business coming for this council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, y'all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And it is so declared to declare this meeting of the council adjourned until our next regular meeting.